Good afternoon, everybody. It is five o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to October. What is today, seventh? I was going to say fourth. I'm stuck on the fourth, seventh school board meeting. So welcome, everybody. And if you will join me, please, in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now, everybody will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And now we'll have roll call of board members. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger.
President.
Dr. Craft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And our student rep, Leila.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I will entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda, please.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions or discussion from board members? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. The pass is fixed and on. And now, we are going to move to our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. We do have, at this point, at least three people in line for comments. We'll start with the two that are signed up virtually. A reminder to please state your name, your address, and you're limited to three minutes. And first, we have Beth Ike.
Madam Chair, I do not see Ms. Ike in the attendee gallery.
Okay.
So I can remind people that they would like to comment publicly and they are in the attendees' gallery. They just need to raise their hand so that I can promote them to speaking position or they can type a message in the chat so that I know that they are looking to speak. So right now, I see three in the attendees' gallery, but I do not see anybody at this time with their hands raised.
Okay, so we can circle back and see if she shows up or later, there's another opportunity. And then we have Ms. Regan. Welcome.
Can you all hear me? Hi, my name is Ms. Regan and I'm a reading specialist at Walker Upper Elementary. I've been teaching for eight years. My partner, teacher, and I have written a letter that I would like to read to the board. Dear CCS School Board members, allow us to introduce ourselves. We are Jen Snyder and Greg Regan. We are both reading specialists at Walker Upper Elementary. We both thoroughly enjoy the time we have spent teaching in Charlottesville City Schools and love working in this community. As you know, the mission of CCS is every learner, every day, every run. Right now, the substitute shortage in this division is stopping us from accomplishing that mission. And we fear for the success of our students. As you know, every school in the division is struggling to find substitute teachers and there seems to be no insight and no real solution offered to stop the crisis. The current solution is not sustainable or in the best interest of our students and staff. Teachers at many schools are being asked to give up their planning time to cover staff absences, which means they are not being given the appropriate time to plan and implement the quality of education they strive for. If resource teachers, math and reading specialists, behavior interventionists, instructional coaches, STEM teachers, librarians, and counselors, and even our administrators have all had to cover absences. This means that students who are struggling with math and reading are not receiving the necessary interventions that they need to succeed in and out of the classroom. Students who excel are not being given the proper enrichment that they need to keep growing their minds. Not to mention that these services are services that local taxpayers have paid for and have been told that their students are receiving. If this issue is not addressed, this lack of intervention and enrichment support will eventually be reflected in the test scores that are so harshly examined by the state for accreditation. Surrounding districts are having similar issues but have made attempts to address the problem that we feel CCS should implement as well. These actions include, but are not limited to incentives and bonuses for substitute as well as raising the substitute pay or possibly having in-house subposition with benefits at each school. We and our students are employing you to find a remedy to the situation so that we are no longer hindering our education of our students. There are a couple of things that I would like to add that the letter did not address. The first is to clarify that we are eight weeks into this school year and I have pulled one group of students one time for reading services. I would also like to note that while COVID has exacerbated this issue, it has been an issue in the division for years. I would also like it to be noted that the Walker administrative team have done everything that they can to try to get substitute teachers in the building, problem solve, and to make this process as painfully as possible. And we greatly appreciate their effort. Lastly, I would just like to say that we cannot keep asking teachers to do more with less and expect to have a culture of teachers who want to live out of career in this division and grow and cultivate knowledge in themselves and in our students. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate every single one of you.
Thank you. Mr. Kama, I think, I don't know, Chris Meyer?
Yes, I was going to say, Chris Meyer is, has Chris Meyer as the handmaid. So I've promoted Chris to panelist and should be able to unmute to speak at this time.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, school board members, and thank you for the time and your efforts and again, managing our.
Chris, we're having a hard time hearing you.
All right.
Better.
Yell at the computer. All right, here we go. So one, I just wanted to update a little bit on an effort that a number of parents informally took upon themselves to support the reconfiguration funding. I hope it was noticed and I think it is noticed in the results that we saw Monday with a five-zero support by the counselors. And I want to thank all the school board members who put a lot of time and effort also into helping make sure that the reconfiguration advanced to this next phase. But the parents spent a fair amount of time, not only one organizing a petition on change.org that I think as of Monday afternoon had 137 signatures, also a letter that was sent on Monday from local businesses and environmental climate-oriented organizations that had 17 signatures on it. We organized multiple public comments at work sessions and also on at Monday's city council meeting in addition to a social media campaign that leveraged a lot of the materials the MDO had put together. So I would like to say that this informal group is very interested in continuing to support efforts to ensure that the configuration and the redesign does happen, including a sales tax increase, et cetera. I think you know how to get ahold of us, but if you'd like to, you could just obviously contact me. But we do want to continue to support again and make sure this happens. Finally, and sorry, real quick, I'm at 124 Oklin Court and have two kids at Jackson via elementary school. I do am concerned that the new aftercare program is not covering teacher professional development days and other days. Again, this is a, kids have missed a lot of school over the last, again, year and a half because of COVID, obviously, but I would hope that the aftercare program that now the YMCA is providing, you know, can have access to the facilities and offer that programming during those days to, again, help kids catch up. At the moment, it is not happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kama, anybody else?
At this time, Madam Chair, I do not see any other hands in the attendee gallery or any chat messages indicating time for public comment at this time.
And as a reminder, anybody else here in the media center? If you'd like to take this opportunity, you can do so now and/or we have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting for public comment again. So you don't have to sign up if you'd like to come up and say something. One more second, Mr. Kama, to monitor that and then we'll move on. Okay, all right, thank you. We will move on to the next item, which is adoption of our consent agenda.
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
A second.
Any questions from any board members? Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yeah, it was not so much a question as a comment. And I'm glad that the reading specialist spoke this meeting. I was concerned and I wanted us to think about as a board, and now that we have new leadership, about Walker Upper Elementary School and in particular, but as a division as a whole, our staff turnover. And I was concerned over the summer when we lost a lot of long-term, long-serving staff members. And we're making a big push for equity and inclusion and hiring more teachers of color. But I'm very concerned about our retention rate with those teachers. And so moving forward as a board and with our new leadership, I think it, we really need to spend some time focusing on Walker. I'm sorry, Buford, I apologize, Buford, as well with the staff turnover and our teacher retention, particularly in that area, and staff retention.
Lishonda, thank you for that. So did you, this wasn't necessarily particular to the consent agenda.
Our personnel items are always in the consent agenda about who's leaving and who's not leaving. And so I just wanted to, I wanted to bring it up.
Gotcha. I just wasn't sure too, because we'll have a discussion in the staff report as well, I think. So I wasn't sure. No, thank you. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor of approving our consent agenda for this evening?
Hi.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, we are now moving to our next item, which is action items. And the first item is approval of our 2022-2023. Wow, that seems weird, first time I've said that. Proposed budget calendar, and we have Renee Hoover. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Gurley. Before you, you have the FY23 budget calendar for approval. Since the last time that you saw the calendar, there has been an addition or a change. The joint meeting between the city council and the school board will be on February the 2nd.
That's not in this, in what we have here in writing?
No, it's in your, it's on the calendar. It's probably about two-thirds of the way down on the page. Past the PTO's budget update and input.
Yeah, we hadn't locked into that date yet, so that's why it was added, correct?
Correct. It wasn't locked in when you first saw the calendar in September.
Right, and then our Saturday work session also is included in this and we weren't sure.
Your Saturday work session is included on January 15th. There's been no changes to that date.
Great. And then also, thank you for including the city council's budget calendar. So please, everybody, take note of that. And if you can attend or watch and tune into any of those meetings, that's really important that we do that. So this is an action item. If we could get a motion for that, please.
I'll move that we accept the 2022-23 budget development calendar.
Second.
Any other questions, comments on that? All right. I guess we're all in favor. Sorry. Any opposed? There we go, official, thank you, Ms. Hoover. All right. And next, we have our wellness policy with Dr. Baptist.
Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Gurley. As you probably recall, back in June, when we did the major policy update for this year, you had the wellness policy that had been worked on very diligently by the School Health Advisory Board. And there were some concerns about formatting at the time. Since that time, we've continued to talk about the formatting and the board asked that we wait until the September SHAB meeting before we voted on the, or you voted on this. And so we did meet on September the 14th and the SHAB board discussed that the format should be very similar to the way all of our other policies are and that regulations were indeed the responsibility of the superintendent. So the SHAB voted unanimously to bring this policy back to the board for action. So I bring it back tonight, ask for action on this so that we can have the wellness policy implemented for the school division.
Thank you. We can either discuss it if you want or all make a motion.
I'll move that we approve the revised wellness policy.
A second.
Any questions, discussion?
And I just say, I'm the board member on SHAB and, you know, we, you know, I think the committee, that committee feels, the advisory board feels really good about our current wellness policy and we're eager to be able to fully act on it and, you know, once we vote to implement it, that that will be the policy that will be in effect for our division. And so we've been eagerly awaiting this moment.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor of approving this? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baptist. All right, items for discussion. We are now to energy and water report. Kim Powell.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Gurley. The report you will be receiving this evening is a report you have received before. Typically, you receive this update in the spring around Earth Day. But with COVID and the pandemic items filling up our agendas, you haven't had this report in over a year. And so as I was working with the city trying to determine, you know, how we could get this on the agenda now, because it was, it was time. I was, I found out that October is Energy Awareness Month. So it's a time where to encourage government and organizations to raise awareness of the importance of sustainably managing the nation's energy resources. So actually, October is a great time for you to receive this update. And I'm very pleased that we have with us this evening Jill Grenier from the Sustainability Office. She will be joining us virtually this evening. Her colleague Kirk Vizier, who's mentioned in the, on the agenda item. We work very closely with Kirk. Unfortunately, he is unable to be with us this evening, but we're very happy to have Ms. Grenier with us to provide this report. She is going to be joining us virtually. There we go.
Yeah, can you hear me in a second? Hi, my name is Jill Greiner. Thank you, school board members, for having me and thank you for this time. I am the city's Water Efficiency Program Coordinator. And as Kim mentioned, not here with me today is Kirk Vizier. He was instrumental at developing this report and he is the city's Energy Management Coordinator. And today, I'd like to give you an overview of our school's 2020 Energy and Water Performance Report. This was developed by the city's Energy and Water Management Program. You can go to the next slide. So just a little bit about my role with the city. My focus is on monitoring and managing the water used at our facilities and also implementing programs that support community-wide improvements in water efficiency. My coworker Kirk focuses on monitoring and managing the facility's energy usage with an emphasis on improving efficiency and reducing our overall energy footprint. We both facilitate the city's Energy and Water Management Program that emphasizes improving energy and water efficiency at our city and school facilities, which is over 70 municipal sites. You can see a picture of our Energy and Water Management Team here, obviously during COVID as we're doing our Zoom meetings. We've got Mark Zavikar from Facilities Maintenance, Crystal Rittervold from Facilities Development and Environmental Sustainability, and Kirk and myself from Environmental Sustainability. Through the team, we have a really great cross-divisional perspective to help find solutions that impact our energy and water usage. Next slide. The city's Energy and Water Management Program has continued its strong partnership with the schools. That was really set in place by our Energy and Water Saving Goals that were outlined in the 2019 resolution for Charlottesville City Schools Energy and Water Performance. Since the signing of the resolution, we have had monthly meetings with the CCS administration to discuss the school performance and educational initiatives. Also, we provided quarterly updates to each school principal around the school's performance and upcoming education outreach efforts. Next slide. In this presentation, I'll be reporting some of the highlights from our 2020 Annual Energy and Water Performance Report. This report is a 2020 update from a more detailed 2019 report that established a lot of the background and baseline information from our program that we've been working on. And you could actually view both these reports as well as a companion interactive dashboard on our, on the school data on our website. And I've listed that at the bottom here of the slide. And of course, I can't discuss 2020 without mentioning COVID-19 as it had really a significant impact, obviously, on the schools and also on the overall energy and water performances of our buildings. Building occupancy was significantly less throughout the year across all of our school facilities, which resulted in a huge decrease in utility usage. And COVID-19 created a new challenge of tracking any changes that we implemented by our program to increase efficiency. And so this report makes clear that a lot of the decreases in utility usage were primarily driven by this low to no occupancy in these facilities for a large portion of the year. However, the program will continue to explore a lot of the, you know, through this unique year and how our school's portfolio performance with regards to goals and trends can be sort of evaluated. In addition, the performance and some of the actions that we typically implement by our program were significantly impacted by COVID. And so a lot of our actions were delayed or canceled or had to be modified. The report incorporates three focus areas identified in improving energy and water performance, and those are going to be operations, technology, and people. So first, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about our program's operational focus and actions in 2020. Next slide. Operations is really important component of our program as it often involves delivering actions for minimal costs but for potentially some of our greatest achievements to reduce energy and water use. Our program's goal with operations is to have schools run as efficiently as possible with the needs of the users of the school. And COVID-19 triggered a lot of operational changes, particularly at schools, started to shut down in March of 2020. And our Facilities Maintenance Division really worked hard to scale back some of our facility operations, particularly with some of our HVAC schedules while still implementing COVID-19 mitigation measures within our facilities. And we continue to meet regularly with the CCS administration staff through the pandemic to stay on top of the changing needs and requirements of the schools. We also continue to monitor utility usage monthly and reported, you know, questions or concerns to the appropriate staff to further investigate these issues. This monitoring was really important as we, as there was less use of many of the school buildings, which means a lot of the leaks or, say, like electronics being left on or HVAC units not working correctly would most likely have gone unnoticed. In 2021, we're going to be monitoring our HVAC schedules and doing a lot of those actions as the students start to return to in-person learning. And we're expecting actually to see an increase in utility usage in 2021 when compared to 2022. And this will be mostly a result of the increased occupancy and also implementing some of the COVID-19 HVAC mitigation measures. Next slide. Technological actions focus primarily around improvements made at the school buildings through equipment upgrades and replacements. COVID-19 had a significant impact on technological actions as many of our projects slated for 2020 were put on hold to ensure staff were able to respond appropriately to COVID-19. The actions included some upgrades to LED lighting, improvement to HVAC equipment, and upgrading building automated systems or VASs, which is really important for controlling and monitoring our buildings, particularly the HVAC systems and lighting. And also, we could do this remotely, which was really effective during COVID. The program is also pursuing opportunities to assist with funding these improvements. This includes participation in a rebate program for implementing projects that reduce energy use and improving energy efficiency and looking into an energy performance contract. COVID-19 did delay the process significantly, but where our energy savings performance contract is going to be a primary focus for the program in 2021, which would help deliver some essential upgrades and improvements to the school facilities. Next slide. So focusing on our last action, the people that use and interact with the facility can have a significant impact on our facility's performance. A primary strategy for our program utilized is to connect with the people that use the facilities with education and developing better awareness of really how our facilities work. So in 2020, our program put out quarterly educational campaigns, each with their own theme and message and educational materials that were targeted at the students. Starting the summer of 2020, the program put out activity sheets to help engage the students while they were at home or remotely learning and were supported by the school's ISAM staff. In the fall, we also had, we started to meet and work with the school's Green Bacon Club on energy and water saving initiatives. The program also worked to educate the school staff around energy and water saving efforts. We put out messages about limiting the use of space heaters in the schools as these are really unsafe and they can cause a lot of hot and cold issues in the workplace and use up a lot of energy. And then looking toward 2021, we again are going to be continuing our education outreach efforts at the schools with our quarterly educational messages and materials. With COVID continuing to impact everyone, we do anticipate using activity sheets as the primary materials developed to further our program's messaging. Next slide. So now, turning to the school's performance, we actively monitor the performance of our school's facilities, looking for trends, abnormalities, successes, and when it comes to energy and water usage. We currently have a general goal of a 2% reduction in utility consumption each year. And we use this goal as really a point of comparison for each school's performance to continue to encourage overall reductions in utility consumptions and costs. As I mentioned, COVID-19 posed a unique challenge for monitoring our facilities as the occupancies were very different and our operations dropped drastically when all the lockdowns were put in place. And so continued, this continued to make the year very, you know, sort of significant and very different. And so we had to kind of evaluate it very differently from, you know, normal years. And two of our main metrics that we use to benchmark our facilities and track energy performance is energy use intensity, or EUI, and the Energy Star Score. An EUI is a measure of the energy used per square foot of a facility and it can be compared to other similar used facilities. So in this case, schools can be compared to other schools. And the lower the UI, the better. The average UI for an educational facility in our region is at 62.8 kBtu per square foot. And our schools averages were around 65.3 kBtu per square foot in 2019 and 84.9 in 2020. Energy Star Scores is actually a one to 100 scale and in this case, the higher number is the better one. And these scores are developed by making the space attributed to a facility. So our square footage, the number of occupants, the number of computers, and say, operating hours, those are all put together and we look at the energy usage for a given period to determine the score. And this is done using Energy Star's Portfolio Manager, which is an online benchmarking tool. And it is a way for us to compare the performances of our schools to those across the nation. A score of 75 for a school would mean that it's in the top 25% of schools across the nation in efficiency. Also, 75 is the minimum score needed to pursue an Energy Star certification for the school. And the Energy Star Score is an operational benchmark, meaning it's actually going to shift from year to year. So Energy Star emphasizes really pursuing this certification annually and reassessing each year. The scores did increase considerably in 2020, again, due to our reduced operations and number of occupants. And so we still are kind of calibrating these benchmarks for the facilities for 2020 specifically and using Energy Star recommendations to take into account how to handle the pandemic. And once this is done, we can feel confident that we can pursue Energy Star certifications for any of the schools that qualify. Next slide. In 2020, the school's portfolio spent just over $900,000 on energy and water utilities, which was well actually below our typical year for the schools, which spends closer to about 1.2 million annually. And so compared, comparing our portfolio to our baseline year, which is going to be 2015, the school saw a decline in utility usage. The test. The test of this decline is really going to come over COVID-19's impact, or after COVID-19's impact, utility usage, and as we sort of see what happens in 2021 and beyond. Because we were seeing a slight positive trend, increased utility usage until 2020. And the estimated utility savings that we saw in 2020 compared to 2019 was nearly $350,000, and this is again due to the measures taken during COVID-19 to do things like turning HVAC schedules off and, you know, reducing a lot of our lighting and things like that. Next slide. Here we have the actual amount of what we use in terms of electricity, natural gas, and water in 2020, and their percent reductions for 2019 usage. Again, this is mainly attributed to changes in operations and use of the school due to COVID. We do want to emphasize that Facilities Maintenance Team and CCS working together to communicate specific HVAC schedules and needs for the schools was essential for meaning this level of savings. Next slide. We also look at the school's impact on greenhouse gas emissions from the natural gas and electricity usage. This figure shows the amount of greenhouse gases produced from the energy used in 2020, which you can see was a 28% reduction from last year. This will most likely increase in 2021 as the schools are operating on a more typical schedule with greater occupancy. Next slide. I wanted to end with a few notes about our 2021 outlook. With COVID-19 impacting, you know, still continuing to impact this year, we will still remotely monitor and report on school's performance. As the schools open back up to students, it is expected that some of our utility usage and cost will increase and potentially even higher than 2019 reported numbers. And again, this is actually due to some of the COVID-19 safety measures put in place. We will continue to review utility performance monthly and investigate any opportunities to improve efficiency through our operations, technology, and behavioral strategies. The program is working to develop clear utility reduction goals for the school's facilities that are in line with the city's greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals and our climate action plan. In addition, the city is actively evaluating the use of power purchase agreements, or PPAs, to help fund the installation of solar in the city and school facilities. And lastly, through an energy saving performance contract, which is in the very beginning stages right now, the program helps to identify and tackle a myriad of opportunities to improve efficiency at most of the cities, or the school's facilities, and to realize the cost savings from these improvements over the life of the contract. And last slide. So thank you again for your time today. You can find more information, including the reports mentioned, at the city's website listed here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I do have a quick question. Kim, did you?
The only thing I wanted to add, thank you for that, Jill. There's a lot of information covered there in a fairly short period of time, and there's so much more she could have covered. One thing that wasn't touched on was charlottesvilleschools.org/conservation is a website that really highlights all the student outreach materials and things that have been going on, and Jill has been a big part of that. Before Chrissy Vick moved to North Carolina, she was huge in that partnership. But that website does also reflect a lot of the student outreach work that has been done and continues to happen. So the work never stopped. They continued during COVID. There was outreach to our students continuing in that way. So big thanks to the team at the city for all their partnership and all of these efforts. The people who meet with them each month are myself and Nigel Standish, and Nigel plays a big role in helping to facilitate that outreach to our students and dovetailing those resources in with our curriculum wherever it's appropriate, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill. So I was wondering if we could go to page eight of the presentation, please. Maybe you're seeing it. Anyway, in looking at that, this is the page that breaks down by school, and you were talking about the energy use intensity and the Energy Star scores. So I was just wondering if you or somebody could just speak to, besides the obvious and the age of the building, what's going on at Venable?
The Venable Annex, I think, is probably what, and also, yeah. So the Venable Annex score is really low. That's in part due to just sort of the unique use of it. It's a very small space and just sort of the amount of kids that use it and through the operations of it makes it sort of a unique case. And it's likely that sort of the way that our, the benchmark system is not really sort of accounting appropriately with how it's getting used. So there are a couple of things that we still need to look into in terms of, you know, is categorizing this as a school the best option for it? But yeah, we are still looking into sort of these options. In terms of energy use, you know, it does use a decent amount of energy. And again, just because of the smaller, sort of surface area that it has. But yeah, Kirk, who does all the energy side, could definitely probably speak to some of the more nuances, but he's been very closely monitoring that site just to make sure there's nothing interesting going on there.
And thank you. And then when you're evaluating, or whoever goes around to evaluate these buildings and looking at these numbers, I mean, are you identifying specific parts of the buildings that we potentially could make a change on or with currently?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think with our efforts for their energy performance contract that we're going to be pursuing, that's going to do a really great job at giving us an idea of some of the things that we could tackle to improve these numbers. And that's sort of what we're going to be using to sort of help dumpstart that. You know, in the meantime, we've been sort of doing things that we can easily tackle to, you know, start getting these numbers in the right direction. And a lot of that's shoring up some of our, you know, operations and our HVAC schedules and things like that. So we've sort of been working on that first, you know, as we first come on and making sure schedules are correct and that the equipment's functioning properly. So a lot of coordination with, you know, your old staff and also our Facilities Maintenance staff to work on those types of initiatives. But our energy performance savings contracts should also start sort of tackling a lot of the other ways that we haven't really been able to address to get some even better savings out there.
I mean, and I know a couple of years ago, we talked about even just changing the lighting, you know, in here and things like that. Are we looking at that still?
So, yeah. Performance contracts. Jill, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. So that would be included in the energy performance savings contract that we're pursuing. It's basically taking all of our savings efforts that we could do in sort of a one big package. And the savings is sort of offset. So, you know, if, you know, say, lighting upgrades, you know, we don't maybe save as much than what replacing our, you know, HVAC system or chiller. Those are offset each other. And so basically, we have this contract that allows us to, that helps sort of pay back all these savings and changes that we're going to be doing. And so our hope is to, by pursuing this, that we can do some, you know, all these sort of list items that we've been wanting to sort of tackle, like, you know, LED lighting upgrades and things like that. And so that would definitely be, that would be considered in sort of this evaluation. We're still evaluating firms that would be able to do this program for us. So we're still sort of the initial stages of it, but we're hopeful that it'll be a great way to get these numbers down or in the correct direction, I should say, and get some of our savings in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Brier.
I'm wondering, I'm looking at your slide number 11 that addresses the performance greenhouse gas emissions. What is it that you feel we could do as it relates to your statistics here with regard to electricity and natural gas? Yes, we're declining in greenhouse gases, yes, but we are now using our buildings more. So is there something that we can do to be more, I guess, more mindful? Or is there something we can do to help us to continue to reduce the emissions? Because we are now, as you say, back to quote-unquote "normal" operation.
Yeah. In terms of the behavioral side, you know, we are working on that with our students. You know, there's a lot of messaging going out of, you know, like turning the lights off when you leave a room, you know, turning the water off, you know, when you're done, you know, washing your hands and things like that. So we are trying to convey some of those behavioral sides to the students, and that's where some of those activity sheets are coming in and hopefully some class lessons that are going to be incorporated with that. You know, in terms of on the operations side, we are trying to respond appropriately to the needs of classrooms, and obviously, we do want to meet, you know, comfort needs and just the general, you know, when people are in there, we need to make sure that everything's running appropriately. But with that, you know, we do evaluate our schedules, which helps sort of make sure that, you know, our systems are running only when needed, which is going to be a huge way to sort of cut down on unnecessary electricity usage or natural gas usage. And then we are, as we're sort of working on these climate action initiatives, Kirk is actually a lot more involved with working with our climate action side of things, but he is trying to use our energy performance contract and some other initiatives to try and get at some of the more operational savings that we need to get to the, you know, right place that we want to be.
Okay, I have one last question as it relates to natural gas. A lot of the schools in their kitchens use natural gas. Are we looking at the types of those and things of that nature that utilize natural gas to make sure that they are the most efficient ones that we have in our building?
So that would be evaluated as part of an energy performance contract. So yes, that could potentially be included, and it would, you know, if we, if our contractor sort of evaluates and says this is a very inefficient model or, you know, it should be electrified, those would be things that would be evaluated as part of that. And we'd be able to sort of package that all together for making those changes.
And in that evaluation, you would do cost estimates, I'm presuming. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Wade?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions or comments, really. And that one was concerning the climate action plan. I was surprised that we didn't have an adopted one for the city. And I think that when we get that done, it should be done hand-in-hand with the city schools because we, you know, we have most of the buildings that the city owns. And so that really should be a big, we really should have a big hand in that. And one of the things that you were talking about, lights. And I was looking at the lights outside as they're about to come on. And I know that Dominion Power owns the lights outside of school property, but for those inside, I was wondering if the, if they are energy efficient. I know Dominion Power has a program that is cost-neutral or cost-positive for those. And I think that for us, that's, you know, like a no-brainer. We should participate in that program because it won't, it won't cost the school or the city any money. So anyway, so I think that that is a program we definitely want to try to participate in. And Leah had mentioned the gas, and I'm learning more and more about gas. I just heard something this morning on NPR where it's not necessarily having gases emit something that may not be very healthy. And so we want to just make sure that as we're doing the plan, that we look for alternative energy sources and, you know, as much as possible. And so I think that we're learning more and more each day, and we just, we should have that climate action plan and those, these lights. I know we've been talking about the lights here for at least six or seven years, and that it seemed like it's something could have been done in one of those summer months or something like that, because we'll recoup the cost, you know, pretty quickly. So that's, it's really not a question. It's really comments. We need that action plan adopted as soon as possible. It needs to be, the schools really need to have a major say in that so that we can make sure that our footprint is small as possible as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Bryant?
Dr. Kraft? Yeah, maybe to follow up a little bit on that. Well, first of all, to just express appreciation for the team that the city has in place and for this presentation. It's really very comprehensive, and it's really helpful. And thank you for all the work that you're doing. So this is also sort of a question slash comment, but we, Charlottesville, I've been really surprised at the number of renewable energy companies that are here, particularly solar, you know, and then we also have wind energy. And I'm wondering if there are opportunities to partner with any of these companies who could actually maybe come in and either advise or, you know, help us implement some of the things that we would like to do here, you know, in our division. And I guess it would be partnering with the city, but also with the focus on the school buildings. So I'm wondering if that has been considered at all, working with any of these companies who are out there?
Yeah, so we are, you know, considering solar as definitely a strategy for reducing our energy use. It's going to be sort of hand-in-hand with some sort of, you know, power purchase agreement or some sort of initiative. We do always have to also look at the, you know, if we're doing a rooftop installation, how old the roofs are. And so that's where a lot of the discussion with the city side and our Facilities Maintenance Team needs to occur to make sure that those changes are going to happen hand-in-hand, and we're not putting an installation on something that we're going to need to replace the roof on in the, you know, the near future. So those types of things are definitely being investigated and are, you know, currently being pursued. Unfortunately, I'm not directly involved with that instance. That's more on our climate side and also our energy side, but I do know they're actively looking into those types of opportunities.
I just had one comment. I do agree with Mr. Wade that we need to move forward with the climate action plan in conjunction with the city and also look for lots of ways to save energy for the schools moving in the direction of solar. I know a lot of our buildings are, you know, aged or, you know, older buildings, but hopefully we can find ways to put some solar panels in some of the schools. I think that will save us a lot of money in the end and lighting and so forth.
Yeah, and those will be addressed in our energy performance contract efforts as well, which will help actually with some of our savings to help offset some of the other, maybe, you know, installations that aren't as, that we don't get savings back as fast. And so that's going to be really helpful for when we kind of combine those types of efforts together.
Thank you.
With the energy performance contracting, what happens is you, the city is looking at different, they're called ESCOs, Energy Service Companies. And these companies, this is all they do. They specialize in doing these energy performance contracts. And the reason it makes sense to replace the lights and replace the water fixtures with low-flow fixtures and things like that in kind of a holistic manner and bundle it all together is that there's actually like state legislation that facilitates or allows for these energy performance contracts because the whole program hinges around guaranteed energy savings that pay for the infrastructure improvements that you're making. And so you look at the whole, you look at your goals, you look at the whole, you know, facility's condition. It's a detailed assessment, includes kitchens and everything. And then you make the decisions that make the most sense to achieve, to make a big saving step, if you will. And what this also does from a financial perspective is it doesn't place burden on debt capacity. It doesn't place burden on the operational budgets when you're able to tackle these things holistically using the energy performance contracting tool. So I'm very excited that the city is moving forward with this. I believe they did it a decade or more ago. I did one in another school division, but it's been a while. And compared to shopping for insurance, you know, the technology changes and stuff, and just every night, it just makes sense to go back to the market and approach it in that way, that holistic way. And, I mean, it's a project. It takes effort and teamwork, and we have a great team at the city that's looking at this, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add that that's, that was what I think that the action, the city's overall action climate plan needs to be adopted so we can have some goals so that the city schools can be part of that, you know, have some pretty aggressive goals for us to try to accomplish. But I think without the plan, we could have, you know, a plan in the city, and if we're all together on the same page, we can move forward. We need that plan.
It's got to be together because to your point, Mr. Wade, we're most of the square footage in the buildings, and so it would not make sense to exclude us. You're right. It's vitally important.
And along those lines, I mean, the team that works. And along, along those lines, I mean, the team that works through facilities and, and like our CAP group, Mike Goddard and Kristen. And, and so we are actually, within a couple of weeks, we have a big meeting, the school reps with them to look at our CIP projects. And, and they're always wonderful as far as looking at, you know, HVAC systems and/or roofs as we're coming up and needing to do roof replacement. So, you know, there's always discussion and, and forward thinking as far as, um, doing it so that they're solar ready or the power purchase agreement. So this is definitely on the minds of everybody, um, you know, and, and definitely I'm, it's, it's on the top of my mind. And then, you know, you've heard a lot of that too, in, in the presentations from V M D O as far as, um, how they're looking to prepare, um, the new buildings and the reconfiguration projects going forward. So thank you, everybody. And if anybody, anybody else have comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Kim Powell again with our transportation update. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're very fortunate to have Garland Williams with us here again this evening to talk about this important topic and this challenge that we're continuing to, to work through together. So I'm going to turn the podium over to him. There's certain, there's certainly pieces of this where he's more, you know, in-depth and hands-on. I have additional information regarding the waitlist and work we're doing with our systems that I can speak to, but I, I'll turn it over to him first.
Thank you, Kim. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gerley. I have six items I want to bring to your attention tonight as part of the update. Currently, um, we wanted to update you on the pupil, uh, transportation, how many we have full-time versus part-time. When we first started in August, we had 12 regular drivers and four, um, three relief. Today, we have 10 regular drivers and three relief, which means we lost two of our regular drivers. But in addition, we've added six transit drivers to assist a pupil. Next question was currently in training, how many do we have? We have four individuals that are in training, uh, for pupil. Two, the two new hires, um, have gone through the compete training and have passed their B M D road tests as of yesterday. That's a big plus. We got it consolidated down to that, uh, that timeframe, which we were hoping to be able to do. Uh, and then we have two additional transit drivers, um, who have been through the class portion. Um, and they will take their test on the 26th. How many drivers have been hired since August? We have interviewed and extended offers to eight individuals. Two, uh, have completed, that's the ones that just passed their tests. One is in process. Three began classroom on Monday. And the other two that we extended offers to have accepted offers from other places. How many routes are currently available? When we started in August, we had 13 elementary routes, which included doubles for Clark and Johnson. There were nine middle school routes, eight high school routes and seven alternative school routes. As of today, we have 16 elementary routes, includes doubles for Clark and Johnson. 12 middle school routes, 10 high school routes and eight alternative school routes. Um, and then we're still working with, as always, uh, special ed to get additional information if we need to add more or adjust. Throughout our efforts of recruiting, uh, we continue to, uh, do as much as we possibly can. We just completed a, a series of six-week ad buys. Uh, they're running in, uh, the Daily Press, um, Daily Press Online, Seaville and four FM and two AM stations. Uh, we also had ads running, um, in Harrisonburg on the daily, daily news record and the Richmond Times Dispatch. We are adding Facebook, uh, ads beginning October 18th. And we'll have two banners that we have, uh, developed pretty large and then we'll display them on Avon, uh, in about two weeks. In additional information, as of this morning, we, like I said, we had six transit drivers with the S endorsement, which is school bus endorsement, um, that are assisting pupil. There are five additional transit drivers with the S endorsement that are working at CAT. Uh, we have enticed two of them, uh, to actually come over and, and start the training and work, uh, going to work partially their schedule, um, for pupil. That's it.
Questions, anybody? Or Kim, did you have more that you wanted to present before?
The only thing that I would add is that if you look in Power School right now, so, you know, we, we started school in August, we issued new routes. We tried to reshuffle the deck and make things as efficiently as possible. Transportation did a lot of hard work to do that. And, um, as of September the 12th, this was, I think, around the same time that we gave you all an update. We had 887 students that were on a waitlist. Now, they're varying, you know, degrees of need there. Some just are requesting transportation, but don't, don't have to have it to get to school. If you look at Power School today, it says we have 875. It's not, you know, still on the waitlist. That's not a lot of progress, but there's more progress than that that is being made. There's still big challenges. But, um, we, we've been working out processes to streamline how we exchange information with transportation so that if a student is not using their seat regularly, it can be reassigned to another student more quickly so that we can make changes, just working with the number of drivers we have without having to do everything as one big batch. You know, let's throw it all in and redo all of the routes at one time. So we, we're, we're making those process improvements and that's helping. We've brought another, um, the schools, we have, on the school side, we brought another car service online with Yellow Cab in addition to on-time transportation. So that's another resource for us to help take some of the pressure off, particularly with special needs transportation. And once again, you know, I know people in this room who have been helping out with transportation of students and others, many others in the community. I probably, I don't even know what, what, you know, who those folks are. But just once again, want to extend a hearty thank you to everyone who is doing, going that extra mile, making the extra effort to help get all of our students to school. We have a ways to go, but, um, so the situation is still not good. But there are, um, as recently as today, I was in a meeting with Pat Cuomo and Patrick Markazuma from our tech team and Amy Herndon from Garland's team and John Lee. And we meet regularly and we're making some real improvements in our ability to, um, when we recognize that there is an open seat, get someone else into that more quickly. And I, I'm optimistic for, for that for sure. And I'm also optimistic for the hiring efforts and hearing that, you know, more drivers will become, coming online soon. But the struggle continues.
Any questions or comments from board members? Shonda?
I have two questions. The first, um, when we were updating, when you were updating us on the bus drivers, uh, the last meeting you had an, I, the number of drivers you need to make all the routes work. What was the, the number?
The optimal number of bus drivers is 40.
Forty, okay. And we're at about?
Once, uh, we get the next batch through, we'll be at 20. We'll be a half of what we need.
Oh, thank you. And then, um, Ms. Powell, when you were talking about the 800 students on the waitlist, are they all getting alternate ways to school? Are there some kids who are on that list who just aren't able to get to school?
So what's happening are, is that when schools identify a student who is just not a, you know, there are clear attendance issues with not coming to school when a parent comes forward because their circumstances are changing and they cannot, we just, for lack of a better word, we scramble our resources and we try, we try to address each of those situations as best we can. We appreciate the partnership with the parents and the community and everyone who's continuing to help make it work. But I, I don't have any, um, you know, answer I can give you tied up with a bow that says, oh, yes, we have a plan. But we are responding to the issues as there, there's an escalation process. It goes from the office through the, usually through the principal, but sometimes it just comes straight to me because everyone knows that, you know, I'm the person along with transportation, we, trying to figure it out, you know, as, as the issues come to us. But it's not, there's nothing pretty about that process or, or even routine. We, we have to be creative. We have had families doing the, um, a gas, a gas card reimbursement type thing or mileage reimbursement, rather. You know, we've, we've got these things out there that are being offered as needs are identified. Um, and I'm happy to say that everything from Julia's church van that she and I and some others have been driving to the, we see families come into those programs and then they get a bus seat. And so people were, you know, we, I do see more progress than what that number reflects as far as addressing our most pressing needs. So that's, that's, I guess, the best answer I can give to that question. Not satisfied with where we are by a long shot.
Because the number is not changing, is it just that people who may have had other means of transportation are then now requesting a need or what?
So what's interesting is you'll see someone, a student who was prioritized for transportation and then I guess new information comes forward or they move or whatever. And then a, a seat will free up and then we can put someone else in that spot. So, uh, you know, or, or they just decide that they just would rather do something other than ride the bus. It's, it's a fluid situation, I think you would agree. It's a very fluid situation. And like I said, the good news I was trying to share earlier is I do believe we're, we're getting better at speeding up the interface between our systems so that we can identify the options to try to address the issues as they pop up or, you know, as they continue to rise to the top. It's, it's a constant moving target. And, and I'm, I'm also, I've come to understand through this, how often our students move even within this community. I gotta, I gotta say, I have a new appreciation for that. So a student will have a bus seat, on a, a priority student will have a seat, but then they'll move. And then we've got to figure out how to get them a seat on another bus. Uh, and, and, but then that frees up a seat for someone else who was waiting on that route. So, um, and we're all, we're all, you know, there's a group of us that are very hands-on in this process.
Wanted to follow up, Ms. Powell, sorry. So I understand that it's fluid, but I'm just wondering, are there kids who just can't or aren't able? Like, is there, I understand, like, there's other things working behind the things, but I'm just wondering if there are kids that they just don't, they're not able to get there because of the.
There are, there are families and students that, that have come forward and that, and, and present that. And I can't say that I, that there's any principal or myself who has allowed a situation like that to remain for more than a week or so. I mean, we work it out as fast as we can. I, I don't know, but, but for every one of those I've resolved, I got an email this afternoon. Now, the student's been coming to school, but the parent came forward and was just, um, at a breaking point, you know, so it's, it's communication and it's a lot of people doing the best they can. And it is so far suboptimal, it is so, so far from perfect or what we need. I, I can't stand here and say anything other than that. But I can tell you that everyone involved is, um, trying to be as creative as possible, as responsive as possible. I could tell you my mind works on this constantly and I have ideas, but I don't want to throw them out there and get people's hopes up because I have also tried things. My colleagues have seen me do this and then it doesn't work out, you know, for whatever reason. And so, but we're, 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 we're working it, our team, Garland's team. So, you know, I'm, I'm not, I can't tell you that there are students, I do believe, I, I will tell you this. I, I believe there are students who are not attending school as much as, because that, you are not attending school regularly because of the transportation issue, because the transportation they're depending on, you know, is not, um, available to them perhaps every day. I, I feel certain of that.
And so then our message to them is please speak up and reach out to your principal and your, you know, and.
And we will do the, we will do the best we can. But even then, just to be clear, it's not like I, I, whoops, where I can snap my fingers and just resolve it the next day. I want to manage expectations, but, um, no one is turning a deaf ear to this. And there are a lot of people with big hearts that are, and a lot of determination that are working on it. But it's, it's not what it needs to be.
Right, no, people need to know that though. I mean, if you're struggling, I mean, and, and to your point.
We need to know.
Yeah, we need to know.
We need to know.
A parent is, is, you know, um, working their schedule and doing the best that they can to make it work. And, and maybe they're five minutes late to work, you know, every day because they're driving their student and, and they get, you know, some messaging from work saying, this is not toler, you know, we can't tolerate this anymore.
We, we have to partner with our parents more than ever.
Absolutely.
And it is important that they speak up because there are other reasons. There's always been reasons that students have attendance issues sometimes. So don't assume that if you're not getting to school that we just chalk it up to transportation. We do need people to tell us that it's a transportation issue between COVID and, and all kinds of things. We do need to clearly know it's a transportation issue so we can, can put it on literally the lists that we work and we work and we work.
Ms. Perrier, do you have any questions? Mr. Bryant?
Ms. Powell, I just want clarification. I know with all the juggling and, um, all the stuff that you all are doing, great stuff you all are doing. I just want to make sure in my mind, for those students who are having issues, uh, getting to school, if that's the case, what are we doing in terms of outreach to ensure that those students are staying abreast of their studies? That's, that's, that's my concern.
And I'm afraid that I'm not, um, that would be something that principals would need to be to or folks on the instructional side of the house. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer, but I, I believe, Mr. Williams, would you like to add anything that I was saying earlier because I felt him coming up and I didn't give him a chance to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the question was asked, how many drivers do we need? The optimal number is 40. For the model to work, we need 30 drivers. So the 10 is designed so when we have issues of being sick or that we'll be able to do active management, which is what we need because a bus gets down 15, 20 minutes, then we will have those extra bodies to allow us to insert a bus and keep everybody on schedule. That's the 40 number. So our number right now is we're trying to get to 30. Optimal number is 40. So we'll be 20 when this next group comes through. And then we're 10 from where we need to be, but optimally, we need to be at 40.
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, before COVID and the additional challenges that presented itself with that, we were making things work with around 20, 20 or 20 or so drivers in that ballpark with crowded buses, three to a seat. That's the difference. So where we would be with this next batch of drivers that Mr. Williams reported on would be pretty much back, back to pre-COVID conditions. And if we could have kids three to a seat and so forth as we did pre-COVID, it would take a lot of pressure off. It's still going to be huge and significant, but, um, that just gives you some comparison pre-COVID to where we are now, to where we need to be. And to put into context as reference to that, we do want to keep that bar high at the 40 because similar to what the teachers described and what we know is happening with subs and, and that is, we are experiencing that with our custodial team. We are experiencing that pressure in every facet of our operations. Today, when we had our weekly, one of two regular transportation meetings we have every week, one is for special needs transportation, the other is just our transportation routing improvement process team. And, um, Amy Herndon, the person who does the routing, I don't know Jamie's exact title, but she's one of the leaders I work with her. She had to leave the meeting early to drive a bus and that is nothing new. So, um, anyway, we're all hands on deck. Like I said, Julia and I have been driving, lots of folks in our office have pitched in with that.
Um, I'm going to jump over here to our student rep. Leila, did you have some comments or questions?
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask about early morning buses here at C H S. Are there going to be any, um, because some students take early morning classes and struggle to like attend because of transportation?
It's a very good question. Uh, we are struggling because the drivers that we have are having to drive so many routes and double runs and all these other things. The, some of the things that are also being sacrificed, if you will, are support for extracurriculars and those, uh, early morning type activities. So we had, pre-COVID, we would run buses for things like the fencing club at Beaufort to go to the Carver Rec or wherever they do that, that activity and then the early morning. As we are able to bring on these additional drivers, we will be able, my understanding is we will be able to get back to more normal operations using that driver core to provide those services. It's a good question. Would you like to add to that?
I think that's a fair assessment. But the priority right now is to get kids, uh, everyone we can, the students to school and making sure they're meeting the, the opening bell. And also making sure that we, the number of kids that we take to school, that we can take them home in the afternoon. Uh, we've had additional folks ask or inquire about, uh, employment, but they only wanted to do like an AM shift. Uh, the problem is if you bring them on an AM, then we can't, we can't take the, the number of kids home in the PM. Um, so we're working through these models and we're working as fast as we can. Um, it's, it's going to take all of us to continue to move forward in a, a, a really detailed way to get out of this. But I, I do believe that the efforts that we're making and the coordination that we've got will get there.
Yeah, one more question, sorry. Um, and I'm, I apologize for not knowing. Um, and I'm, I apologize for not knowing. We offer the bus drivers now full benefits?
We are doing a pilot program and that pilot is extending them full time benefits, even though, or even though they are working part time hours.
That's correct.
Dr. Kraft?
I really feel for you guys trying to, to work this out. This is so hard, you know, and it really is, it's, um. Complicated. I have just a couple of things, questions. One is, I was wondering, Ms. Powell, are there any efforts or could there be any organized efforts at the school level through PTOs? To, um, you know, get squads of people who could help with driving?
The schools have been doing that to some extent. Um, and I won't even pretend to, to know all the things that everybody's been doing behind the scenes. So when I give these examples, I don't want anyone to think, or if any of your principals are listening, that. I'm, I'm, I know they're probably doing it in this every school, but yes, I know there have been organized PTO efforts, I believe around Walker and Beaufort. And then I know Burley Moran for sure had, had some parent things going on to help. So, and that's really honestly, one of the beauties of this community. And one of the reasons that we can be standing here talking about a waitlist number that looks like what it does. Without having more absentee, absenteeism issues and things than what we are experiencing. And I don't say that to lessen the problem and diminish the suffering our families are experiencing in any way. But I, and people who work with me know, I try to always find the bright spot. And I do think there's a lot of beautiful things going on, again, in the community. That's why I wanted to say what I said earlier. I just, we don't take any of that for granted and I'm sure I don't even know everything that's going on behind the scenes to make it work.
So if, if people are listening and, um, you know, maybe from some of the other schools where that's not happening quite as much. Would, would it be welcomed at this point to have some organized efforts?
If anyone, if any family wants to step forward and offer assistance to other families, I would say the best thing to do is contact the principal. Because the principals, the folks in that school office, they know the families that they are hearing from who are in strife. Or they know who the students they're watching that aren't maybe attending as regularly as they would like them to. And they maybe, may suspect it's a transportation issue. So all you need to do, if it's in your heart to help out with this, is to contact the school office and it'd be great.
And then just for you, Mr. Williams, um, just regarding the pool of CAT drivers. And you mentioned some encouragement, like maybe there are a couple of people who are, you're winning them over. Do you think, is there more potential within that group of, um, of drivers to add more drivers who could help us out? Or are they, are you maxed out with that effort?
So in managing both systems, we are, uh, there's a degradation on the transit side to allow us to take those six individuals we have right now to work with pupil. I dare say that that's as much as I can do right now.
Okay.
But there is a possibility as we world, as we, um, transit is going to do some enhancements and some route changes in January. When that happens, there may be an opportunity for me to slide potential other drivers, entice them to come over and help with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams? If I may add to what, what Mr. Williams just said, um, we're very grateful for the CAT drivers who've always been part of making the equation balance for, for city schools transportation. And I want to highlight to anyone out there who's maybe interested in coming to work for Charlottesville City Schools, or you have your, your CDL or CDLS already. In your, when you consider your options, we are somewhat unique with this configuration of having the CAT driving opportunities as well as the pupil driver opportunities. And I like to think that when you combine those together, we should be the employer of choice for this area. Because there are so many opportunities to drive, so many different opportunities to drive. So for someone who really wants to put that CDL use, when you consider us as one organization, it really should be a competitive advantage. Because there's just so, so many opportunities to work. And especially as we fill out our roster, I know right now our existing drivers are thinking, yeah, there's too many opportunities to work. But as we achieve that, the balance that we're heading towards, we really, we should leverage that. And people should understand that there's more opportunity between CAT and pupil with under Charlottesville City than there are with other employers and, and more variety, all of that.
I just, I just really have a comment to make and Leah may not remember this, but several years ago, before COVID and everything came up. She suggested that we have a time during a meeting that we kind of praise and honor the bus drivers. Because they're, the welcoming wagon to the school is the first space that the students see it can. You know, have that student start off on a good day or bad day, just knowing the importance of them. And she saw that then, I think that we see the importance of it now. So I'm glad that, you know, that we need to continue what we're doing. And I'm sure that you all are doing some, giving them some extra love now. Because I'm, I'm sure that every bus driver is getting kind of a little, you know, um, enticements from other divisions that needs to come their way. So anything that we can do to continue to keep them here, um, do so. Let, let us know if we can do more.
I appreciate that on behalf of a dedicated staff and dedicated drivers. We appreciate the effort and the appreciation that you just gave.
Thank you.
But I would also say that the team that is in place now is doing everything we possibly can to eradicate it as soon as we possibly can. So, uh, sleep well, knowing that we're, we're not where we want to be, but we're doing everything we can to make this go away as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
And Mr. Williams, you need to remember that, um, not only are you doing everything that you can, but our students are safe. I see buses, whether they're the CAT buses or our own school buses. Our students are as safe as we are able to make them. And I think that that's why our waiting list is so long. The children want to ride the bus. It's a service that we have always been able to do pre-COVID. You're working, I know that's what keeps you up at night. But thank you for your efforts, but more importantly, your efforts around health, wellness and safety. Because if the children and their parents did not feel safe on the bus, your efforts would just be for naught. So it's obvious that people want to be on the bus with the waiting list. So thank you.
Well, appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I want to extend my gratitude as well to the, the pupil, uh, dedicated bus drivers and also the CAT drivers who are helping out. Please let them know we all.
They're all CAT, if I just correct that. They're all CAT, so it's pupil and transit.
Right, so I just, we appreciate them all. Um, and every opportunity I get to stick my head in the door and say thank you to bus drivers when I see them, I try to. So, um, I, I do have a couple of questions before, and I know Dr. Gurley has a question also. But could one of you speak to, um, your comment as far as waiting on the information from the special education department? And how that changes and impacts routes, please?
So because, um, special education is one of two areas. One, the other is the VPI preschool program where transportation cannot be a barrier to services. They, when a student comes in, if they're new, um, or if their placement changes, um, those things are also very fluid. And those students, um, because of our legal requirements to serve, um, legal and fiduciary requirements. Because, uh, this is not something I like saying, but people, most of the, transportation is not a required service of a school division except for those areas. So when something happens in those areas where students' home changes, their placement changes, or a new student comes in. They, they, um, they, there has to be a priority to resolve those things. And so sometimes you have to leave yourself, which we've actually not done, but leave yourself a little bit of room or, or what's your, because you know it's going to, it's not a question of if those changes are going to come up. It's just how fast and what's the change going to be that you have to adapt to. So that's what, um, Mr. Williams was trying to.
So, and does that happen, I mean, pretty consistently throughout the year? I mean, I understand.
It happens every week.
Every week, wow, wow, okay. Um, and then a question as far as the two drivers that, that passed their test today and they're ready to hit the road, um, starting Monday. How does that impact like routes? What, what difference does that make for us?
So it allows us to take the office staff that's, uh, driving and put them back to dispatching and, and doing the required work there. So we haven't gained anything yet, but we are, uh, we've created, uh, uh, those individuals, put them back on the bench to allow us relief. But we'll get the others through as a part of the, the next group that starts on Monday, the training class. And hopefully get those through the, the process as fast as we can.
Okay, gotcha. And then, um, last time you met with us, you shared that you had. I believe it was here, changed some routes to potentially help, um, CHS students, some CAT routes.
But we changed, yes, um, we, we added to, so I gotta be very careful. Because, um, uh, the feds are required, we can't do things that are specifically designed for schools. Public transit is not designed to do that. So what we have, what we did is we knew that an existing CAT route went by the high school. We added additional service to that route. It also did, it touches other activity points, but it also touches the school. That allows an, an additional means for individuals to get there on a 15 minute basis. It's not specifically for schools, but, um, the benefit is it gets to schools.
There the possibility or there are routes that potentially could do something similar near Beaufort for that?
We want to be very careful about putting, um, middle schoolers or elementary schools on a public bus. Which is why we designed additional service for the high school.
And so I, there was some outreach from a parent specifically about Beaufort and routes. I, I asked them to reach out to you all directly, but I just thought I'd bring that up as a question.
In other places where you do have elementary school, you have a, um, security or police force. We are not in that situation, um, that is dedicated to the, to transit. So I would caution us to, to allow, if we're going to talk about, um, permanent or, or modifications to the existing model. Let's focus on high school the way we have it. Um, allow the elementary and middle schoolers to, to, we'll continue to try to get service to them.
So I totally understand all of that. If there are routes that are going by Beaufort or any of the schools, um, and there's parents riding with, or an adult riding with a student, obviously that's fine. Is there any way that we can communicate what those routes might be or highlight them? Somehow between what you all have up and, and what this, what we at the schools have? So that parents could see what those routes are really easily?
Yes, so it just depends on how you want us to display it. We can work with Kim and her team to figure out, um. The best way to highlight that, so your, the, the parents and students to be able to see it.
Yeah, I mean, I, just a thought, but I know that there was some inquiry about it. And I just figured if we can be more transparent and it's just easy for people to see, oh, I could pick up this bus at this time and anyway. Thank you, we appreciate you and all the, all the work that you are doing. Thank you for working with the schools. And Dr. Gurley, I believe has some questions or comments, please.
Yes, mine is more so a comment. I know Ms. Powell had mentioned that there are some students who transportation may be impeding them from getting to school. And so I know that could be a worry on the minds of people who are listening. So I know Dr. Ode and I had discussed this week and I was going to ask, since we're talking about transportation and this is in line with transportation. If she just wanted to share how we are ensuring that students who are not attending regularly are still getting instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Gurley. And I just want to really stress how, uh, as much as this is not an ideal situation with transportation. Everybody is working so hard to ensure that our students are getting what they need. Our, we have had some students who have been absent, uh, but I haven't received, uh, an abundance of, um, calls from principals. About students being absent so much that they're missing instruction. Kim just talked about the work that they're doing when they get a call from principals, uh, saying that a student is out. And, and they, they rally up the troops and, and get those students to school. Garland is talking about the work that they're doing. So as Kim said, it may not be immediate, uh, that the children are getting to school, but they're getting there. And, and our principals, you, you all know that we have excellent principals and no one wants to see our students fall behind. And so they're working really hard to ensure that students have, um, act, access to activities and, and, um. Learning that they can do if they happen to be out on a given day or two. Uh, so we, we continue to work on it. Uh, it's not ideal, but I will say that I'm very proud of the work that everyone has done to ensure that our students are getting what they need to be able to move forward.
And just to conclude with that, we will, um, what we can do too is we can continue to provide you updates in terms of our absenteeism rate. And so we can see, we can monitor that data and see how things are being impacted, uh, if transportation, how it's impacting our student attendance.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have one last question. Mr. Garland? Mr. Garland? You indicated that the adjustments, I think this will be an acceptable term. The adjustments, uh, for the routes coming to the building where we're currently sitting. Are there any costs associated with that to our students?
No. Our system is running fare free.
Any other questions, comments?
Actually, and we'll continue to run fare free for an additional two years, so.
Thank you. All right, thank you both. Appreciate you coming, thank you. All right. Next, we have our COVID update from Dr. Beth Baptist. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, um, Chairman, our Chairwoman, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. I wanted to share just a little bit of information about where we've been with COVID, where we are and where we think we're probably headed. There you go, you can go to the next slide. So in looking at where we've been, these are the number of cases that the city of Charlottesville has had every month since last December. You can see that in May and June, we really didn't do tracking because it stayed like four, seven, something like that for a long time. But we picked it back up in July when we realized about the middle of July that something different had happened, which we now know was Delta. If you look, the two months that really sort of have scared me were February of 21 and September of 21. And when September of 21 started, I thought, here we go. We had 675 cases that month. But if you look already, or to this point in October through today, we've had 81. So I have to look to see how many had we had by the 7th of September, since September was our bad month, 203. So we're far below where we were the same time in September. And I think if you watch the news or listen to the news, you will hear many say that we may have somewhat rounded the corner. We're not out of the woods yet, but we're getting better. We're still considered high risk or red, along with just about everybody in the state. A couple of people turned orange this week and I want us to get to orange. And we're close to the point that we will be in what's substantial rather than high, but we're not there yet. So next slide, please. So Charlottesville City Schools cases since the 1st of July. These are the numbers that have been reported to us. These are the cases that we've been using for contact tracing. And so for the, since July 1st, we've only had 86 student cases. And I say only 80, those 86 are, we're not happy about. But when you look at the numbers that some school divisions have had, they're much higher than 86. Staff members, we've had 26. Of all of our staff members, and I said this last month and it's still a true statement, of all of our staff members and our students for that matter, who've had COVID. No one has had to be hospitalized. One went to the emergency room where the student was diagnosed for COVID, but no one has been sick enough to have to be hospitalized. Now, those who've had it don't want to repeat it, but have not been, um, as sick as they had been, could have been. And for all of our staff, every staff member was fully vaccinated prior to having COVID, but one, and one had had one shot. So that's one reason why I think many of our folks have not been as sick as they could have been. And some of our students that are listed up there have also been vaccinated and have had breakthrough cases. Next slide, please. I know some of you. Next slide, please. I know some of you follow our dashboard very closely. This is the part where we see it graphically shown, not where I enter the cases every day. But this is where we are through today. I went in Dr. Gurley's office today and I said, knock on wood. He said, what? I said, we did not have one case yesterday in Charlottesville City Schools. I was knocking on wood till about 4:15 this afternoon. And we don't have a positive all the way through, but we've had a positive rapid. So this number may change tomorrow. But when you look at it, you can see the week in September was our bad week where it was pretty much throughout the country. And it's begun to go down. Again, I'm not happy about any one of the cases that we've had, but we are looking at trends. Next slide, please. This slide is from UVA. They do every week show their model of when they think the peak will be for Charlottesville, the Charlottesville metropolitan area. The top dark color toward the right, that number has been changing. And it's been making me nervous because it started out that they said our peak would be in September. Then they said our peak would be around Halloween. Then they said our peak would be around the middle of November. I'm like, uh-uh, uh-uh, no. Well, if you look, and I know you can't read those tiny little numbers, but now they say our peak was September the 26th or 24th. I can't even read the number myself. So hopefully they're correct. And we've gone past the peak and we've started on the other side. Again, we are not out of the woods. We cannot get rid of our masks. We can't do a lot of the things that we've wanted to do. But if we are truly past the peak, we're going to get there. We will get there. So what have we been doing? I've got vaccinations in all caps because that is still one of the main things that we've got to get accomplished, to finish going on the other side of this. We've had the protocols that we've had in place that we update as new information comes out. You've heard from Ms. Powell all about the air quality things we've been doing, all of our PBs, everything that's on this list. We've continued to do this year, even though it hasn't had as many cases as last year. So when I put et cetera, et cetera, we're doing other things. I don't even have masks listed there. But we're doing things, you know, like masks, other things to try to make sure that our students, our staff and our families are safe. So those are things we've been doing. Next, please. So what's going to happen next? Something you've been wanting to hear more about, and I'm very, very excited to say that if you look at these two columns on the left is the Vista testing. That's the pool testing we've been talking about. Dr. Gurley signed the MOU today. So we have been talking to the staff about what we need to do next. Our vendor is Molecular Next. That company is also the group that does some of Blue Ridge Health District's testing at the mall. So Blue Ridge is very familiar with them and have nice things to say about the staff that's working there. We're finishing getting some resources and getting ready to post a position for the coordinator to work with this and for a nurse. These are being paid for from the grant. These are not CCS funds. When we expressed interest in Vista, I told them we needed $6,000 worth of supplies. We needed a coordinator and a nurse and they, all of that's ours. We've just got to access it. So we're getting ready to go with that, but I didn't want to do anything on that till that MOU was signed. So the MOU signed, so we're ready to go. The second part of the testing, which is related to, but it not, not exactly the same, is the diagnostic testing. Any of you who've been in my office, have been with me on a Zoom meeting lately, have, all you've seen behind me is boxes. Somebody asked me today if my office had been moved to a warehouse. In that, in my office right now, I have 1,032 rapid test kits. And today, somebody gave me the information, more information on the best way to do the distribution and get everything done. These will be proctored tests, which means every one of these tests will be done on the internet with a live person on the end of it that will be working with the person doing the test and will get results pretty immediately. So what am I going to do next with all of these boxes? I already have scheduled a meeting with our nurses for Monday. Going to explain to them the processes that we need to do, what we, what forms we have to do, how we enroll people in this process and what happens next. And Tuesday, I'm going to start getting these tests out in the schools. So we can start doing those. Now, these tests aren't just for anybody that wants to take a COVID test. These are for people, adults, our students, and if they're, well, for either one, but especially if they're students, we will make sure that we have the consent. If, if families have given consent for the pool testing Vista part, they have also given consent for the other, the diagnostic part. But it's say a child is not feeling well, we think it might be COVID. We don't have that consent. We're going to call the parents, see if we can get the consent. If the parents don't want us to test their child, we won't. But we will not test any children for whom we don't have consent. But we will do that for any students and staff or for anyone who has been identified as a close contact and they've been recognized or recommended to have a COVID test. So we're not just going to pick out people and say, second graders today are going to get tested. You've either got to be symptomatic or known exposure to a case.
These are rapid tests.
Rapid test, yes. So that's, that's pretty exciting that we've gotten all of this done. And then the last page that I would mention, again, is the vaccinations. We have announced that we had approximately 95% of our staff vaccinated. Beth Chuck looked at something yesterday and she said, Beth Baptist, you're wrong. It's 96.5. And I didn't change the slide today, but I'll take it. 96.5 is better than 95. So what are we going to do with vaccinations? We're continuing to vaccinate students 12 and up with the Pfizer vaccination. We've done, it's either two or three clinics so far at Charlottesville High School. We have another one on October the 15th where we will be doing second shots for some folks. And any Charlottesville staff listening who had Pfizer, listen tight because if you had Pfizer and you had that second shot at least six months ago, anytime before April 15th, we're doing booster Pfizer shots on October the 15th here at Charlottesville High School in the morning. So if we have staff members, we wouldn't have any students who are yet ready for that because of when Pfizer was released. But if we have any staff members who want the booster, having had their first two shots prior to April 15th, we can do that. I already have 25 staff members who have signed up for that. I am asked several times a day, what about Moderna? The minute they tell us that we can offer the boosters for Moderna in the school system, we will have that set up or will be working to set it up. For the children, we are confident that we're going to have the okay from the CDC and the FDA and all the other folks soon. So we already have three proposed dates in November for Pfizer for our five to 11 year olds. We're talking about how we're going to do it. It'll probably be at the end of the day or late afternoon so that, that children can either get it while they're there or parents can come. We might make ourselves available for some weekend clinics, whatever we can do with Blue Ridge Health Department to get these shots done, we will do. Maybe calling on some of you and some others and listening to volunteer, but we're going to get this done and I'm very excited about it. And the thing that's exciting about doing these clinics, when we say we are, they'll be fully vaccinated before the winter break. So that is one thing we're excited about. While I'm talking about COVID, do also want to put a plug in for flu shots. I know that the division was offering flu shots this evening. Some of us got ours. I'm trying to move my arm around a little bit. And, but we will have another flu shot clinic here at Charlottesville High School on the 18th of October. So we encourage our, our staff and their immediate families to take advantage of that. So I'd ask, what questions do you have about COVID? Oh, one question that Ms. Bryson Morseburger had, I cannot get the direct answer for you yet about the COVID beds. Check every day on the UVA tracker. And today, or yesterday, but reported today, there were 66 in the hospital at UVA with COVID and five new admissions yesterday. There is a Virginia hospital site, but they don't give the numbers of types of hospital stay. And I've tried to find that out. And I know you sent me an article that I looked at, but it's seeing it on an ongoing basis. I've not been able to keep up with that.
All right, we'll start down this side. Mr. White, sorry. Gotcha. Any questions? No. Dr. Kraft?
Just want to give you a big round of applause or something. I'm just so grateful and appreciative of all of this work and how proactive we're being with this. So I don't have any questions. I think, I think I had one, but I can't remember it anyway right now. But I, you know, mainly, I mean, it just seems like we are taking every step that we can take now and really, really working on this for our whole community. So.
You made me think of one other thing, though. We have participated with a couple of UVA testing events on weekends. The last few Thursdays, we couldn't do one tonight because of equipment. But we've had quite a few CCS volunteers to come out and help with those events. And as we have more, I will let you know. The tasks are easy. It's taking a piece of paper from somebody, writing the first three digits of their license plate on a piece of paper and walking. Even I can do this. So as we have more testing events, I will reach out and see who else would like to have fun with us.
Well, I would be happy to volunteer. Thank you. Please call me.
Mr. Bryant?
I don't have a question, but just want to thank you, Beth, for all the hard work and coordinating and all the testing and everything that goes into it.
It's a teamwork.
And your team, Beth and team, Beth and company for doing all the hard work and coordinating all of this. We do appreciate it and also not only sharing the information and updates with the board, but with the community at large. I think that's very important. So thank Beth and team for a great job.
That's for you. Ms. Shandra, anything else? Leila, you have any questions, comments? Okay. I do.
Okay.
Thank you. First off, a lot of gratitude. So just wanted to check in, tell me a little bit more, tell us a little bit more if you can, please, about this rapid testing because I'm excited about that. I didn't know we were going to have that fall into our hands.
We were able to access this because we volunteered to be a part of Vista. And when they, when I filled out the form, they said they would give us 250 tests. And I answered back, that is not enough. I need as many as you will give me. I didn't know I was going to get 12 massive boxes in the office. But you, you get what you ask for sometimes. And they, they come six to a smaller box and you cannot open these until you're on the phone with the people or they're invalidated. So I've not touched them because I don't want to invalidate. But whoever administers the test will have to set up an account with Navco, I think it is. And then for our students, whoever's administering the test will set up what's called a monitored profile for these students because they're not old enough to do it themselves. And they will administer the test. And like I said, somebody's on the other end and they get the results pretty rapidly. And so I think there's a lot of uncertainty still about the validity of many of the rapid tests. I think people feel more certain about a rapid positive than they do a rapid negative. So if we have a rapid positive, we're still going to ask that they do a PCR. But that's, we, more likely, we know we need to get them out of the building. If it's a rapid negative, we would still report it to families and, you know, make sure that they know that about the symptoms or what the issue has been. We will be able to keep up with the number of positives and negatives that we've had in the division. Every week I will report how many tests have gone out to schools and how many tests have been actually used with children or been used, period. And then if we run out of the 1,032 that we have, we can ask for more.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to think through, you know, the protocol of, as far as if you have somebody who's symptomatic and we're pretty sure they're positive or anybody who's symptomatic, it makes sense to me that you're going to offer this rapid test. I mean, you can do that right there on site. You know, if it happens that there's a staff member who, you know, was exposed to a sneeze or whatever, you know, I mean, that makes sense. Although there's that three to five day, you know, incubation period too, where they might not be. So I mean, how is that affecting or, we're not changing our quarantine or what we're wanting those people to do, correct?
What we're hoping is that using these tests will diminish the amount of quarantine that we have to do. But we will, if somebody is exposed but not showing symptoms, we would probably ask them to wait, you know, a couple of days, two or three, four days to, before we would do a test. But if someone is having symptoms, we would do the test immediately. If you're determined a close contact, we probably would ask folks to still quarantine, but maybe have them come back to the school to get this rapid test. All of that has not quite been worked out. I need to hear the questions from the nurses when I meet with them Monday because, you know, I've got my idea how all of this is going to go, but the real experts are going to tell me some things I don't know.
Right.
And so we will probably be changing that. And then if I need to, I'll have the health department involved in setting exactly what we will do with it. But we're going to the best of our ability, use this test to help us identify quickly and to reduce the amount of quarantine.
Right. Yeah. No, in my head here, all those flow charts that I follow with work and the schools, all different directions. So I'm sure there will be some change, but that communication will be crucial. So, but thank you. I mean, that's, that's really kind of exciting. And then, you know, PCR testing to the follow-up PCR testing piece, I don't know, I haven't heard lately, you know, what the demand and delays are in the community. But again, just want to express gratitude to, you know, the pediatric offices, you know, as far as what they're doing. But, but any of them who may be listening or, you know, community members who might have connections to pediatricians or other avenues for those PCR tests that are often needed to validate this one way or, or to, you know, give that negative, you know, for us to be able to update, you know, where people can get those tests is just so crucial.
The Blue Ridge Health Department website does include weekly where test sites are and where vaccination sites are. And we have told the nurses at all of the schools that if you have a family who says they just don't have the means to go somewhere for the test or go somewhere for the vaccination, our pediatricians have said they will work with us and we will get them where they need to go for that. But I will say after the last year and a half of working with our pediatricians, some of the world's best pediatricians are right here in Charlottesville, Abilom County, and we're very fortunate to have them.
We sure are, no doubt. And we appreciate the efforts by you and by staff and everybody who's, you know, you know, bridging that piece, the transportation piece or helping families who might have that barrier. I know that that's always a concern. So a lot of gratitude about that. And thank you for the update as always. And yes, please do reach out again for volunteers or help with those clinics. I love to do it. I just not able to make the last one. So thank you for thinking of us all.
Last week, I even missed the first quarter of the UVA football game to help with one. So you know I've realized it's important. I think y'all asked me last time, what would keep me from missing a UVA event? COVID testing.
And maybe a grandson, maybe a grandson.
I'm here. He's in Stanton.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I know. Any other questions, board members? Comments? Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm here for the next item.
You're up then. Thank you. And so we're moving on to our staffing update report. Thank you.
Thank you. In your, in the school board information, you have a written report, but this presentation will include some of the information in slide format so that others can see it. Next slide. The patterns that we had for hiring of teachers for this year, and I've given you a couple of years in there, wanted you to sort of. Wanted you to sort of see how we have been with the, with the different races and also different genders. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Miss Perrier did ask this morning to have numbers. The numbers from this slide for 21, 22 are on the next slide. Here you've got percentages such as 73% of our new hires, which were 67 were, are white. You can see the number, which is 49 on the next slide. So you can look at that next slide. So these are the numbers for the hires for 21, 22. And when I first started working with the HR part of this this summer, it seemed like we were hiring lots and lots of people. But so I was surprised when we had fewer hires, 67 for teachers and administrators than two years ago when it was 93. So I was surprised that the number was smaller. But you can see on those two slides, both the percentages and the numbers that, that go with the percentages for our new teachers and administrators. Then on the next slide, please. When we look at the, some of the trends for race and gender, just with our teachers, you can see how we have gone from 18, 19 through 21, 22 with the different percentages. We've gone down a little bit with white teachers, gone up with black teachers. Others would include Asian and a couple of other categories in there. We've gone up. Then when you look at it by male and female, we've gone down in our females and up in our males. And then to the right, you've got the numbers for the current year that go with the percentages for the 21, 22 years. On the next slide, you can see some of the same information for instructional assistants. Again, some big changes in the race, the white IAs went from 66% down to 29. You can see the number of, of black instructional assistants really, really went up. Some of our other categories changed. And then you can see female and male. We certainly have a predone, per, per hundredths of females in our instructional assistants with only 5% males. And you can see again the numbers for this year. Next slide. One of the things that's very important to us, and not just in HR, but in our total school division, is retention. We've had some conversations in the office about which is more important, retention and recruitment. It's almost like a chicken and the egg thing. We've got to recruit before we can retain. But if we do a great job retaining, we're not going to need to do as much recruiting. So I really believe that both are very important and I could argue either side that one is more important than the other. But when you look at retention over the last few years, you can see what our percentages are. And I do not have numbers for that, Ms. Perrier. Did not have opportunity to get that. But you can see that overall, we have not done too badly as far as our retention goes. We certainly want to retain as many as we can, but to be in 85s and 86s for the division and teacher is pretty good based on what other divisions are doing. We did have a little drop in our administrators. One thing you have to remember there is that we have so fewer administrators than we do teachers and other groups that one or two will change their percentages much more quickly than in the teacher rank. But we did drop slightly in the administrator retention. Next slide, please. So why did we lose folks? For a very variety of reasons. Some retired. Some people probably figured out retirement easier than I did. But we had some who retired. I hadn't figured it out yet. Some retired, a little over 20, moved. We can't stop people from moving. Pursuing new opportunities is the largest group. We've had some people who've decided to go back to school. We've had some who've decided they want to do something other than education. They just want to get in different fields. So while that is our largest number pursuing other opportunities, quite often they don't tell us what that new opportunity is going to be. Their reason for leaving is I'm pursuing something new. Some may be in the education arena, some may not. But that, when they, they tell us pursuing new opportunities, that's what we have to go with. Personal reasons generally are things like, I'm not ready to retire, but I need a, a year off this year. I'm going to have a baby or, you know, something like that. But again, that's not a large number. It is under 20. And then staff shifts, when we move people around, it can sometimes open up positions to have the opening to have to, to fill. And really, when you look at the because of COVID, that, that's very low. I would guess that some of the pursuing new opportunities could also be because of COVID because some people just have, education has not been where they've wanted to be during the, the realm of COVID. So they wanted to try a different field. Dr. Kraft, do you have a question?
Could I just ask, how do we ask that question of them, the pursuing new opportunities? Because I'm, I'm wondering if some of that may be burnout related.
And I think it, I think it is. I'm not, I can't tell you the exact verbiage for the question, but I will look at the questions for this year to make sure we can try to, to, to get more definitive answers without getting in someone else's business too much. But I want to get more information about that category. So where are we on October the 7th? Next slide. There are still some positions we need to fill. We still have five teaching positions. Now, one of these positions will start Monday. So it's, it's not like it's totally vacant, but I put it on here because we don't have someone in that position tonight. We've got a STEM teacher at Venable, halftime reading specialist, work-based learning. That is a new position. What we did in that is we took some money from the Carl Perkins CTE grant and put it with our Virginia graduates grant to do a work-based learning assistant. And that person just has not been hired yet. And then we've got some instructional assistance positions. We're still missing our float nurse. We were able to hire the nurse for Charlottesville High School. Who will start one day next week. She's already doing some days with us already, but full-time she'll be with us next week. But we're still looking for the float nurse position. Still need a half socially emotional worker, looking for one custodian. And then lastly, substitutes, all in caps, because that is an issue for us. And you can go to the, the next slide. I'm sorry that the reading specialist from Clark is not still with us after presenting her letter because I think the conversation that if I, I've had most with Dr. Gurley this week has been about substitutes and what can we do about substitutes. You've heard transportation and the issues they've got with bus drivers. I could just about say ditto for substitutes. Being a substitute is, is a hard job. People think, oh, you just go sit with the students for the day. No, no, no. We don't need babysitters. We need substitute teachers to keep instruction going when the teacher is not there. So it can be a difficult job. So what have we been doing to try to, to work with this? We have been compensating teachers who are needing to fill in during the day if there's not enough subs in the building. We are looking at, I have looked at the requirements to be a sub and are changing those some. So it will be easier for substitutes to become substitutes. In the past, we have required at least 60 hours of college work. We're reducing that so that we can get some people who would be great subs that just have not met that mark yet. We are looking at hiring, I'm not going to say a number because we don't know what the number will be, permanent subs to have so that people are hired as a permanent sub. So you all have one ready person there in the building. I think Dr. Gurley and I both have worked in divisions where that has been done. That won't solve the problem and that won't cover every position, but we'll at least have somebody in the building. And we're not planning on this being nine or 10 positions when we talk about it. We just don't know yet how many of these positions. And we're going to talk more about it this week. We are offering incentives for subs who work with us for at least 10 consecutive days. And once a sub gets to day 11 and continuing on, they get long-term sub pay, which is pretty much like first-year teacher pay. So that's a big jump for them. When colleges and universities will let us, we will compensate their student, teachers and interns as long-term subs. Some colleges will not allow that to happen until a certain time in their placement. And we're really still kind of early in the placement. So they might let us do it more in November than they will in September and October. But we are looking at that. One thing that we talked about doing and happened today was some of the news stations will sometimes contact us and say, what's going on in the school system this week? What can we cover? We gave them then the topic of substitutes to cover today. There was a session at Buford today to onboard some new subs and Channel 29 came. And when you get home, look at the Channel 29 website because there's a story about it. And Mexico Clemens Nazair, I haven't seen the clip yet, but she was on television today talking about our need for subs. So we're hoping about trying to do things like that. We will get more attention. We've asked our teachers within our building, who are the people in your community? Who are some of your friends? Who would, you know, who would you recommend to be in there? So it's not that we are not doing anything to get subs. We're, we're doing lots of different things and we will continue to do lots of different things. Some of what we were talking about with the, the permanent sub positions or whatever, I can't tell you whether that's just going to be the process while we're in pandemic or is that something we're going to do in years to come? Those decisions haven't been made. We're still talking about them. But we're trying to do what we can right now to make sure that all of our classes are, are covered. One thing I did this afternoon and shared briefly with Dr. Gurley and, and also with Dr. Odie, and we will certainly be more talking about it later, look today at the amount of absences in each of our schools and how many subs we were able to get for different schools. And some things, some questions that we're going to have. Why are some schools getting subs at an easier rate than others? Why are some schools having a much higher absentee rate than others? So this was dated to start conversations with us today and we will do that. Because hopefully we can figure out why some of the schools are having the higher absentee rate, which will reduce the absentee rate, which will reduce the need for more subs. So lots of things that we are trying to do on the area of subs. Next slide, Ms. Wesley. And so what are we trying to do for all the other positions that we've talked about? You can see these and I, I don't feel like I'm reading them to you, but we're trying to post in lots of different places, contacts with different colleges, former employees, those who kind of wanted to be away for a while. Are you ready to come back? We're ready for you. See if we can get them. When I met with the new teachers, I asked them for one thing that they needed to do for me was to give me recommendation for people that they knew who'd be great employees for Charlottesville City Schools. So, you know, tell me who you would want to work with and we'll see what we can do. Needy, I mentioned that. And then just trying to support many of our student teachers to grow our own. Because if our student teachers and interns are happy during their work with us, then they're more likely to want to stay with us later. So try to get in and see the student teachers, see the great thing they're doing, compliment them, work with them. So just a few of the things that we're looking at right now. And then the, next to the last slide, I think it is, our talent acquisition. What do we really want to do to continue growing and to increase? There's where we get the prior prioritizing of both retention and recruitment. We've got to do both. We've got to make sure that we are looking for a racially diverse workforce that really looks like our student body. I know that is something that we look at every year at the percentages of our hires, at the percentages of our workforce. Does it mirror our community? Does it mirror our school division? Looking at non-traditional ways, no longer can we put an ad in the newspaper and expect to get quality candidates. Not that we won't get quality candidates there, but that's just not where they're looking. So we've got to look all the different places to try to get candidates and just work with others who are, are, have access to and are providing different types of learning and to make sure that we're covering the cultural competency pieces that we need. That is so important. We don't, we're not as interested just in somebody who has the skills to teach a content area as, and someone who also has the skills to work within the cultural competency responsiveness that we know is so important. And then just following our employees' talents to see what they can do to help us in the different areas and to use their strengths to continue to grow them and to grow others. And then the very last slide, I was asked to provide some information about different trainings that our staff members have. Every year we have certain things that everybody's required to do. And we do it now via Canvas. People were tired of hearing me do my presentation every year on Bloodborne Pathogens. So we now do it on Canvas. And then on the, in the right column, different positions require different professional learning. So you can see some of the types of things that we're doing. Edge climber is a system working with our data. And then of course, the socially emotional work that we're doing, different things that Dr. Odie needs to do in her shop with curriculum and instruction. And then I provided links in there for what we did at the beginning of this school year for our new teacher orientation. And each of our schools does their own professional learning plan now. We're doing more individualized professional learning than we used to. We finally figured out that putting everybody in one big room to listen to one thing and expect them to get it might not be the best approach. So we're doing more individualized by school and by position. So this is a sample from one school's plan. And then also Charlottesville High School's plan for what they did on this most recent PD day. So I'd ask if you've got any questions about all the things that we're trying to do to recruit and retain our staff.
Dr. Beth, I have a question. Under the slide, substitutes, big issue. You mentioned altering the requirements. Are you looking at reducing the number of credit hours?
Yes.
The substitutes are required. Do you have a specific number in mind?
We are looking at reducing that. I don't know if we have landed on an exact number. I know when Dr. Gurley and I talked, most places have done 60. So the number 30 was floated, the number 48. So we're looking at reducing it. We just haven't, I don't think we've set on the exact number yet.
Okay, so you've been lower than number. So when will we know?
I meet with him tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock. So I hope that we will have that answer tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to start down with Lashandra. Do you have any questions, comments?
I did have a few questions and comments. The, I had wanted to discuss the retention because over the last year, a lot of the, well, the chief, some of the people who left the division have been with us for a long time. And it just made me concerned about our retention efforts. And that when you look at the reports that we get with the consent agenda, most of them just say personal reasons. Personal reason, burden of reason, burden of reason. But when someone is leaving and they're teaching in another division or going somewhere else, it, it makes me pause because we have openings in our division. And I, I just wonder what our efforts are to like stop people from leaving. You know, if we make an effort to move them around in the division more. And the, the exit interview, we're asking people like if we could have done something differently. I guess I just wanted us to really, with the data and the numbers, I understand people leave for a variety of reasons. But I would like to discuss more the retention and the people who have left for particular reasons that we could maybe address better in the future. And so that, that was what I wanted to talk about. Because on the report, it'll say like someone has been with us for 15 years and they're leaving and they're not retiring. To me, that's a, that's a red flag, something that, you know, what could have been the issue. And so when we get the reports, it would be nice to break down just the data in a way that gets at it better. Because that, that's all. I just, the retention part is the part that's getting to me because we can do all the recruitment. But if people are leaving, then that's the, the part that I feel like we need more follow-through with. then that's the part that I feel like we need more follow-through with. So is there, when people are leaving, what are our retention? Do we do a counter offer? Like, what do we try to do to keep you to stay, to get you to stay in our division?
We have done some counter offers, just as other divisions do counter offers when we're trying to recruit from them. One thing about Charlottesville, we are a smaller division. So in certain position or certain areas, there's not as much room for advancement as it would be in other schools. I can think of two people right off that left us this summer for another school division. And one of them, it was, it was a promotion to the other school division into a position that we, isn't in the same organization that we have. So the person would not have had the same opportunity in Charlottesville just because of organizational structure. The person chose to do that because they, the title meant to them, meant a lot to them. I know another one who has been, was a teacher with us for quite a few years, wanted to see what another school division was like, to see whether she wanted to be an administrator in that school division or would return to us later. So sometimes, you know, it's various reasons. I tried to talk that one into staying. It's not against Charlottesville. I just want to try something different. So I haven't barred the door from any to keep them from going out. But we do talk to them and to try to find out, is there something we can do? And I've tried to talk to several, and we, well, we had one who resigned this fall who changed the mind. So sometimes what we do does work, but some have, just in their minds, are going to make that shift. But we do want to try to do what we can to keep the great folks that we've hired. Because for every hiring decision, over the lifetime of an employee, it is a large financial investment in an employee. And we want to make sure we're getting the return on that investment. So, but we can continue to do better in that regard.
And then the other question I wanted to ask was about our HR procedures for when we're hiring. Because I've spoken to a lot of people who, and then we had one meeting where there were teachers from this, I forgot, my brain isn't working, from one of the schools, and they were saying about the hiring process. And so I would like to, us to look at our, how we deal with internal applicants. Because it's, that's a lot of what I get when people are reaching out to me is how internal applicants are considered for positions and promotion.
Our internal applicants are given at least as much regard as anyone else. We are looking for the best person in a position. But we're also always going to look at our internal applicants if they're qualified for a position. I can't always promise an internal applicant that they will be the one chosen, but we will certainly give them as much attention as anyone else.
That's all I have for me.
Ms. Puria?
I too am concerned about retention. It's one thing to bring someone here, it's another thing to keep someone here. And I think if you look at your written report on pages four and five, where we're talking about next steps. Dr. Gurley has hit the nail on the head when he talks about culture of care and equity initiatives. He spoke about that in the information that he recently posted on our website and information that he sent to the community in a letter. And I think we need to begin to look at our school divisions and see if the types of things that he's discussing in his culture of care and equity are things that we are doing. There may be some new initiatives in there. There may be some things that we're doing that we could do better. But when we look at our schools and we say that we want diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the schools don't mirror that, either with the instructional staff or the administrative staff, then what message are we sending? And just because we have a diverse staff does not mean that those individuals feel included. And so if I'm hired and I'm a diversity hire, because I'm African-American and I'm female, but I don't feel included in anything that happens, whether I'm here five years, one year, or five months, that brings about a negative effect for that individual and at some point could bring back a negative response to this division. No, you can't stop people from talking. But if I'm talking to five or eight or 10 people that look like me, that see the mass exodus of people that look like me, what are we doing to say we want them here? I am a product of public schools. I am a product of a public school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Every school I attended, with the exception of elementary schools, was an integrated school. And the preponderance of my instructors looked like you, Dr. Baptist, or looked like Mr. Foma. There were African-American instructors in my school division. And some of them I had, and some of them I didn't. Things are different now than when I was in school. And people feel that it is important to have someone that they can relate to and someone that looks like them. And I'm not saying that we aren't doing anything. But I hope people understand that we can always do better. And it's very difficult to see the positive gism of our school division on one side. But then hear that people don't feel included. And inclusion is more than sitting at the table. Inclusion is respect. And if the instructors and other people in our division that look like me and Mr. Wade and Mr. Bryant do not feel included, then they will leave. And if they leave, are they going to honestly say why they left? And so maybe when people are leaving, we need to make sure that the people that they are talking to are people that they may feel comfortable with in saying why they really are leaving. Because if you have a mass exodus and everybody's saying personal reasons, then what really is behind the personal reason? And I think we need to follow Dr. Gurley's, I gotta put on my glasses, I had a birthday, Dr. Gurley, culture of care and equity initiatives. And we are a small division. With 5,000 students tops. And I'm sure we don't have 5,000 employees. We call ourselves a family. We say for every learner, every day. And the people that are employed by the division are learners too. Teachers learn every day. Cafeteria workers learn every day. And we need to make sure that when we close our eyes at night, we have done the best we can, not only by our students, but everyone that is in the CCS family. Because without the staff, it doesn't matter how many students we have.
Mr. Bryant, do you have any more questions?
More so of concern, and this entails retention and not feeling included. This goes back for many years when I was in the system teaching. And many people then felt, especially those employees who had worked for the school system for many years, who had applied for certain positions and didn't get promoted or even granted an interview. They just felt disenfranchised. And when they saw others coming in, the new ones coming in, these were folks who had worked for many years for Charlottesville City Schools. And I saw this up close and personal. This continues to go on. Even to this day, there are individuals in our school system, teachers, who have been told to go back to school and get your credentials and get certified. And once they've done that, then they apply for positions and are not hired, or sometimes they're not even granted an interview. And a lot of folks are questioning that. And I don't have the answer, because I'm not in human resources. But I think we need to take a look at that, especially our employees that have worked for a long time in this system to ensure that they get a fair shake. I have a personal testimony, I could attest to, but I won't go into that tonight in regards to that. But I really think that we need to look at that seriously. Getting them here is one thing, retaining them is another. But also looking at the folks. We know that a lot of individuals are not going into education now. Everybody's pulling from the same pool. So we're going to have to work on sort of growing our own. But in doing so, we have to, if we encourage them to apply and they are never even given an opportunity to get an interview, that's, that's a concern. And those concerns are in our community. Because a lot of times, they will come and say, well, you know, I applied, but I didn't get an interview. So that is a real concern. I think we need to take a look at that as a school system and as a board.
Thank you. Dr. Craft?
Well, I have some, some of what's on my mind is similar to some things that have been said. So I won't, I don't want to be real redundant here, but just a couple of things. One is, you know, the substitute situation. And I'm really hearing the distress of school staff over this issue. So, you know, I don't have the answers personally, but I really think it's having such a negative impact on, you know, our ability to really function and operate the programs that we want to operate in the schools if everybody's being called out to have to, you know, fill in. And so I hope that we are going to find out a little bit more about, you know, why is it worse in some schools than other schools? And are there some things that we are just not picking up on yet that are contributing to this problem? And I really do appreciate all the efforts that are being made to bring in more subs. But, you know, the distress level over this issue is really, to me, quite serious. As far as, you know, some of what others have said, other board members have said, you know, I do think that maybe it's important to make sure that there, we are conducting either exit interviews or some kind of exit process in a way that people really do feel like they can say the truth. And if they've had some negative experiences, if they have felt a lack of support, and if those kinds of factors are contributing, that they really, that we really can find out and that they feel safe enough to express those things. So I, you know, I hope that we can make sure that we do that. And one other specific thing that I've been concerned about is the, you know, stress level and sort of mental health and wellness issues amongst our staff and the lack of services provided to our staff within our division to address those issues. And, you know, I don't think it's good enough just to say, well, we can refer you out to the Employee Assistance Program. You know, being in the field, I do know a lot of times that that whole process can easily fall apart for a variety of reasons. So, you know, I do think it's important that we have some options within our division that teachers and other staff can access during the time that they're here, if they need to. And, you know, so that would be another thing that I would want to flag. And I'm hoping that, well, you know, I'm wondering how much that's related to people leaving. So I'm just hoping that we can really focus in on some of those things. I'm so happy Dr. Gurley is here, and he's such a good listener, and I know that he's hearing all of this. And, yeah, so I think, just as others have said, we really want to do everything to have the kind of environment in our school division that, you know, people will feel like they want to be here and continue to be here. And when they're having a hard time, they will get the support that they need here.
Yeah, I just, you know, I agree with what everyone says. I think a lot has to do with the economy. I remember when we had, we had to cap the list at, I don't know, 300 or 400 people, because we had so many on it. So I think right now it's a lot of reluctance because of COVID and other things. And we just got to plow through this best we can. I know I've seen the other side of it, been on the board long enough that we've said, you know, we just won't take any more applications, we have enough on that list, we can't take anymore. But a lot is going on now, it's a lot of reluctance. The economy is hurting because people are not working because of childcare, because, you know, COVID and things. So we just got to, just like with the bus thing, we just got to plow through this. And in about a couple of years, we'll be talking about, well, there's too many people on the list. So that's, so you're here long enough, you see things come back around. So, thank you.
Well, I've been here a few years, and I haven't seen this change yet. So I'm going to hang on to your positivity and hope that it does. But with that being said, thank you for your report, first off. And I know, thank you to everybody for your efforts in addressing these and receiving these concerns, because these concerns are huge. I did not have time to go back two or three years. I know that we were in a similar situation. So I'll reach out to board members and then maybe Cam or Renee, I'm not sure if you were really here, Dr. Baptist then. But we did have a situation with substitutes, and we had something built into our, our budget, you know, as an incentive. And I don't know if this is similar to what is being presented today. And I, and I'm wondering if maybe that, because we did build it into our budget as an active way to try and recruit and get substitutes and maintain them, if it kind of got dropped with COVID and with people not being in the building. But I just want to make sure that that's something that we are continuing, or if this is the same thing, I guess is my question, first off.
So the plan that was worked out when Dr. King was still here and Dr. Hubbard and all of that, it was worked out, I believe it was dated, and it was issued, it was publicized. It came to the board just before the COVID closure. It wasn't long before that. And so all of those measures, to my knowledge, have been, have been resurrected as we've gone back to more, you know, normal operations this year. So the, I know that payroll has already started to receive the requisitions, extra pay for people covering the periods and stuff. Now that, right, that doesn't address the fatigue and things that were talked about. And then the same goes, so all of it. I mean, to my knowledge, none of, none of what was presented and agreed to by the board has not been implemented. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate the fact that, I mean, it's, it's concerning to me. You know, I understand that different buildings have different needs. I mean, the elementary schools are smaller, Walker's bigger. You know, we're hearing, you know, concerns being shared and coming from Walker right now. Not that other buildings don't have something maybe similar on a smaller scale. being shared and coming from Walker right now, not that other buildings don't have something maybe similar on a smaller scale. So I appreciate the fact that you're, you're looking and having this discussion about, you know, why something might be happening at, at one school or why there might be an increased absentee rate at a school or why one school might be able to obtain subs a little bit easier than others. You know, also, I know that we had talked a few years ago about incentives. You know, to try and decrease absenteeism, but now with COVID, it's like, if you're not feeling well, please don't come in the building. So I'm sure, you know, there's, there's part of that. And so that's, that's another piece that we have to, to balance. You know, and then, then as a board, or as a single board member, I'll speak for myself. I mean, I, I am concerned. And I know that, that the admin team, the principals, you know, and the building leadership, they're doing the best they can to, to fill the needs of, of open positions in each building. And, you know, I've heard that, you know, people who, who thought they were going to be a classroom teacher might be needed in a different role or vice versa. And, and, you know, and that's part of, I guess, being an educator. And, and I understand that, but that's also hard. And I guess I, I have a concern about what's happening to the kids. And not that everybody else doesn't, but you know, if you pull somebody from one, say they're a specialist, a reading specialist, say, and, and they're being asked to do something completely different, then how do we ensure that the kids are really getting the reading intervention? And I know it's happening. I mean, this is just more of a conversation and it's, it's, it's a big concern. I think that we all have, and, and I think it's not unique probably to Charlottesville City Schools and, and that we're having to do this. But I feel like we need to acknowledge it and, and let, you know, staff know. I don't know if we have answers. I know that as a board and as a, as a board member, I want to support Dr. Gurley. And, and give him some time, like tomorrow. You know, to go out and take a look at this and, and for you to support your admin and admin to support principals and, and, but, you know, and ultimately that our kids are getting what they need. And I do have concerns, you know, I want our kids to read. I want to make sure our kids who have IEPs are getting those services that they need. And I need to voice that I'm a little worried about that. And, and I, again, I don't have answers and I'm not really directing anybody to do anything. But I think hopefully we can all come together and, and be good listeners and, and try and figure out and prioritize, you know, and, and again, it's not to add more onto anybody's plate, you know, and we, we as a community at this point in time with staffing and everything else going on, might need to accept the fact that maybe we need to do a little bit less in certain areas so that we can free people up to really get the kids what they do need. And so that it doesn't feel like it's more and more. So I hope, I mean, that's what I want. Because I am concerned about the staff that we do have. I'm concerned about all of us because we're all working really, really hard, but when it comes down to it, the hours, I mean, most if not all have been teachers and, and, you know, I don't want to lose sight of what that feels like to be in the classroom and the amount of time that, that people put into prepping for classes. And then also the added responsibilities of ensuring that everybody's safe and healthy, you know, and ultimately that's what we all want. But again, to be supportive of that and really to, to step back and prioritize and get the kids what they need, but to do it in a way that everybody understands, you know, again, we talk about equity. And sometimes equity means some people get less so that everybody gets what they need. And so I, I just want to acknowledge that, again, the concerns, I want the people at any building, you know, if you're unhappy, to know that we are hearing you. And I trust that, that you and your team, you know, are looking at that. And, and I know you are hearing this and, and everybody else here.
I take the heart, everything has been said. And every school division is people. Everybody is people. And, and I get it that we all have different strengths, we've got different weaknesses, we've got different levels of comfort in different things. I just ask as the person who's currently heading up HR, that when you're hearing these concerns as board members, please encourage them to come back to us. Some of the things that you've just mentioned, I pretty much know the, the situation, which I'm not going to, to get into. But there are times that we've got to make decisions that are not going to make people happy. And I would be glad to listen and I would be glad to try to explain, but, you know, and we have positions that have a group of children sitting there. We're gonna have to put somebody in front of children and we may not for a time period have some of the other ancillary, but very important services. We do offer every employee an exit interview. Can we do a better job with that? Absolutely. And we will do our best. And if there are people who don't want to come to talk to me, I will find somebody else for them to talk to. We want people to be comfortable. We want to retain. And, you know, I want to listen. So I, I hear everything. I've taken a lot of notes of what you said. Sometimes it's just hard. And during the pandemic, yeah, the stress level has been up to here with a lot of people. And so, you know, we've tried to work with them. We, I don't want it to just be go CEAP because I don't think that is the thing. I can tell you from looking at health claims, not of people individually, but of claims. We have quite a few staff who are working with individual help and we want to do as much as we can. You know, we are there first, I don't, I won't say we're there first, but one of the reasons we're there is for the children. So all the social emotional workers that we've hired, I think are working more toward the children. But they are still there that can maybe be a first stop to help with some of our adults. We've got lots of challenges right now. I said during the COVID report, we might be turning the corner, but it's not over. So the stress level that we're all under because of COVID is not over. And do I think the stress level is going to be gone when they finally tell us the pandemic is over? No, I don't. So we've got to keep working together, but we've got together is one of the key parts of that. If people are unhappy, got to realize that a lot of things that the division, you as the board have allowed to happen to help our employees. And just like when any of us have our own personal problems, we have to plod through it and get to the other side. And that's what we're trying to do right now. But if we don't know the individual issues that people are having, I can't help them.
Absolutely. I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think, you know, here we are at this, this juncture. You know, a new superintendent who I, I'm very pleased, we're all very pleased with, you know, is, is a great listener. And then, and I think as a division, and here we are with a lot of things going on, you know, to be able to, to sit and listen and receive information. And as you said, Dr. Baptist, and, and I'm sure, you know, Dr. Gurley will be in a situation where, you know, sometimes we have to make decisions that aren't, aren't the best. But to listen, to understand, to have the conversation, to understand why things are being done. I think can decrease a lot of, you know, the angst and it just helps. If you understand why something's done, it, it just makes it a lot easier. And, and we all know that. And, and I appreciate you and everybody and what you're doing, but I also want to make sure that, that we as a division, and I know we are, you know, we're hearing people and, and we are here as a team. Yeah, we really do. So thank you for that. I did have one final question though, and I'm sorry, I forgot about COVID and it was nursing. So with that PCR program or with the rapid testing program, you said we wanted to hire a nurse for that, but we're still struggling to hire.
That's where the, the Vista part of it is where we will get the coordinator and the nurse, because even though molecular next will do the pool testing, it's still in case we need an assistant, not to, that we were still pulling on all of our nurses. It would be somebody to help molecular next and a coordinator to help coordinate, are we going to Jackson Villa this week to pool test second graders? Are we, you know, what are we doing? So it's not to take away what our nurses are doing. It would be an assistance for the Vista, not for the diagnostic. Our nurses will be working with diagnostics.
But what if we don't get somebody for that position?
Well, then I guess I'll be helping.
Okay. All right. Okay, I think that was it for my questions. Thank you so much. Appreciate you and everybody. All right. Okay, we are now moving on to our second opportunity for comments from members of the community. We have a couple of people here in the media center and Mr. Como, if you can check and see if there's anybody online at this point who would like to make comments.
Sure thing, Adam Chair. Right now, I would ask anybody who's in the attendees gallery, if they wish to make a public comment. Simply raise their hand by using the raise hand icon tool or to post a message in chat and I'll be glad to set you up for your three minutes of public comment. Okay, we do have a hand raised. The name is listed as Deshawn Johnson. And so I will be sending you, Deshawn, to be able to unmute it this time for your three minutes of public comment.
Hello, Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Hey, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
All righty, good. Um, well, I first want to start off by congratulating Dr. Gurley for his new position as superintendent. Very excited to have him on board as a student. And I've talked to a lot of teachers and they're very excited to have Dr. Gurley. I wanted to say, first off, I'm kind of happy that I joined this meeting today because a lot of what I wanted to talk about is what you guys have been talking about the past 10 minutes. And that's, you know, retaining staff and why, you know, staff are like leaving or like, you know, are unhappy. And I've sat down over the past, we've been in school about a month now. And I've talked to staff members and I've talked to students on, you know, what's really been troubling them. And a lot of things, you know, you guys have touched on, but, you know, there's a lot of deeper, other deeper reasoning, reasons as well. Sorry, I can't talk. And one of those reasons is like for staff, they really don't feel appreciated or heard within the board or HR. You know, we have staff members that are covering for other staff members. And I'm not talking about, you know, just teachers covering teachers. We have instructional coaches and other teachers covering for nurses. They've been the nurse for some schools for months now, waiting for new nurses to be hired. We have teachers who are subbing for classes each and every day, giving up their planning period. And, you know, I know that's, you know, like, I can't remember who said it, but I know someone had said, you know, that's their job as an educator to be able to be flexible in that way. But, you know, when you have to do it so consistently to where you're giving up your planning period almost every day, you know, to self for a new class. You know, it takes a lot of, you know, it takes a lot of, a lot out of you. And a lot of teachers are frustrated with that. We have, I know personal staff members who work in the office and who, you know, are teachers who aren't eating lunch. We have staff members who are coming to school, not eating breakfast, not eating, not being able to have their lunch at school and they're coming home and they have to figure out whether they want to take a nap from how tired they are or eat lunch or eat their dinner because it's the first thing they're going to eat today. So that's one thing that's making a lot of people upset, you know, appreciation wise and just being heard. And then, you know, transparency. We have a lot of, you know, I've spoke with some staff members, they're very upset with the transparency from HR and the board, you know, we're, we're having a lot of, and this is coming from me personally, but I've heard from staff members that we have backstage or behind the scenes decisions being made without the consult of families or staff members that are making them not trust HR and school board. So I know my time's running out, but those are just some of the things I've heard personally for some of the reasons why staff members are leaving or had been frustrated.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Mr. Como?
At this time, I do not see any other hands up and I do not see any chat indicators for public comment.
Give it a couple more seconds. All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to board member comments and I will start down with Mr. Wade. No comments, okay. Dr. Kraft?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I do again want to welcome Dr. Gurley and just express my appreciation for your being here, joining us, hearing everything that you're hearing, you know. It's, it's a hard thing to step in and then all of a sudden here, there's this flood of issues. And, you know, I just really appreciate having you here and being part of the team to work with you. Look forward to that. I would like to get some kind of an update at a, at a board meeting coming up on the more specific activities of the social, emotional, mental health positions that we hired. I really would like to understand more about what they're doing. Who's doing what? So if we could do that at some point at a board meeting, I would really appreciate it. And I guess just, you know, hearing the various things that are going on tonight, the topics that we talked about, it just, you know, really brings home how interdependent we all are on each other. We are really a village and, you know, we rely heavily on each other. And when parts of the village aren't there, the rest of the village has trouble doing, doing the work and, you know, covering for each other and all of that. So it's a, it's a real sense of, gosh, we're all in, in this together and it's, these times are not easy. But I'm actually grateful to be part of this division and grateful to be part of this board. As opposed to a lot of other school boards that are on like Saturday Night Live skits. I don't think we're there. And, you know, I think we really, we all want to do better. We want to be, we want to do our best as board members. If there are things that, you know, you feel we could be doing differently or we could be doing better, I think, I know I want to hear about it. So I guess that's really it. We're, we're all in the boat together and we're all working really hard to all stay afloat and do what we, what needs to be done.
Mr. Bryant?
First, I'd like to thank all the community members who wrote to the school board and their support of reconfiguration. And that report is now in the hands of our city council. And so I want to give a shout out to city council for agreeing to move forward on reconfiguration. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Gollan, I know it's tough with the buses and transporting students here to and fro. Thank you and your CAT staff members or bus drivers and staff members for all of your hard work and for the update tonight. We are all in this together and I know over time that that situation will improve. So thank you, Mr. Gollan and CAT bus drivers and your staff members. Also, I want to thank Chris Myers and for Gavinizing the parents in support of reconfiguration. And, and I think I did sign that petition. So I know my signature's on there. So thank you, Chris Myers, and all the parents who wrote us and the city council and support of reconfiguration. And finally, welcome aboard, Dr. Gurley, Charlottesville City Schools. I'm sure you've been off and running, but we are very pleased that you are here. And we are excited about the good work that you are going to be doing for our teachers, staff and our children of the Charlottesville City Schools. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre.
Every learner, every day, everyone. Tonight's board meeting was the epitome of that. It is going to take everyone every day. And each day we learn something. I think with the pandemic, what has possibly been the most difficult is no one knew. Being in education, if you ever had a question, you ask someone and they generally knew. But if they didn't know, they said, well, I'll ask somebody. Well, we've never been through a pandemic and things change on a day-to-day basis. This power knows that because what the mitigation strategies were when we started may not be the same mitigation strategies now. Mr. Garland knows that as well. So does Dr. Baptist and all of the members of our team. And we get up every day and we put our best foot forward to do our best. I had the honor and privilege of introducing Dr. Gurley the other day at our public education meeting. He came to the P E S meeting. I hope I did in Prague when I introduced him. And I only hope that all of us that are a part of this family continue to have the enthusiasm and, I don't know, energy that Dr. Gurley has. He has taken on a position with a lot of challenges, but a lot of positivity. And so each of us will rise to the occasion to help him with the challenges and to continue to move our division forward. I'd like to thank everyone in the CCS family, whether you are a student, a parent, a studio worker, a food service employee, an I A, a nurse, a teacher, or any level of administration, whether it's building level or central office level. Because I know that each of you are doing your best with what you know and what you have at that time. And please know that I and the other board members are here to support you. Dr. Baptist knows, if I hear anything, she's going to know because that's how I am. I don't want anyone to ever be in a gotcha mode and not know. And we are here to support you in any way that we can. And I want to personally thank all of you for all that you have done and all that you have continued to do to make the Charlottesville City Schools the best.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, I just wanted to take a minute and my thoughts, I didn't articulate them very well. I was thinking in hindsight. And so I do want a second to make sure I'm doing justice to people who have reached out to me. I work in HR and I know everyone on the board is tired of hearing that. But there's, there's what is supposed to happen and there's what actually happens. And so in a perfect world, we could all say like, I have this problem, I have this issue. But that's not how it works. You know, there are a variety of reasons people don't feel comfortable when they have a problem in the workplace or they don't feel heard or seen. And so when people, to me, because they're, they don't know what else to do and they don't feel comfortable coming forward, you know, it's frustrating, it's saddening. And, you know, in the year 2021, it, sometimes it feels like the Twilight Zone. But we have to figure out a system because a lot of people don't feel comfortable coming forward. They don't feel comfortable saying things. And it's all kind of tied together because we talked about internal hiring. People worry, if I complain, will I get a promotion? Will I be considered? And we just have to figure out a way so that people can feel comfortable. There are a few brave souls, teachers and administrators who are comfortable coming and speaking, but a majority of people aren't. And for us to do our equity and diversity work, we have to address it because it's been stewing for a long time. And so, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was articulating, you know, when people come to me that they really are afraid or they feel intimidated. And so I just hope that we have to find a way to do that better. And that was all. And like everyone else, I am excited for Dr. Gurley to be here and join us and look forward to supporting him in any way I can.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I think you've said a lot of what I needed to say already, but I did have a couple of announcements. Wanted to make sure, and it's gone out on Facebook and I think maybe Twitter too, that we have a couple of wonderful events coming up. Family engagement event, October 30th, they're calling it their fall festival. It will be here at C H S from 11 to 1:00. And they will also be offering Pfizer vaccines at that event. So another opportunity for vaccinations. And then another response to a central needs event, which has been very successful. I believe there were three of them last year. And that will be November 20th from 11 to 1:00 here at Charlottesville High School as well. I did notice, and we talked a little bit about this, as far as what is October? And there's a lot of things that, and disciplines that are recognized during October. And it's kind of hard to keep up with all of them. But I did notice a couple of people say that I think last Friday was National Teacher Recognition Day. And I just hope that, you know, every day we recognize and acknowledge all of the teachers and every single staff member and wish we could do more, but you are appreciated every single day. And then also I'm going to put in a plug because prior years, we've had a resolution and I just didn't see it come up at the state level. But October is also Dyslexia Awareness Month, so always going to highlight that. It's important to me and important for all of our students and the community. And bullying prevention month, so a lot of good things. Everybody's appreciated. And what else? I think that's it. I did, I will, I will save my next comment for, at the end. And now we are moving on to superintendent's comments. So, Dr. Gurley?
Thank you. So I did want to say good evening to everyone. And I do thank you all for being here. This moment is very important to me. And so just as I give my, just my final remarks, I do know that the end of the marking period is coming up. And I just encourage our students to finish strong and our parents, if you need some assistance with helping our kiddos get to the finish line, just let us know. You did mention October. And so October is also the National Elementary School Principals Association and Secondary Principals Association recognizes this month as Principals Month. And so I do thank our principals for all their hard work. With regards to the teachers who spoke today, we have heard the concerns. And I do thank Dr. Baptist. She's been just very responsive to a lot of my requests already. And so we've already started looking at some of the data with regards to the absenteeism of teachers and how readily we can get substitutes. And so we're going to work on that. And we are, we're going to meet, we'll have some time tomorrow to meet, but we're going to also meet on Monday as a senior staff to talk about substitute qualifications. For me, my recommendation is going to be just love children. And so we can take all the other stuff off and just put love children. I think we might be able to get a bigger pool. So we're gonna, we're gonna work through those qualifications. And I just want to thank Dr. Hastings and Mr. Marini and Ms. Thompson. I did get a chance to get out to Clark and Walker and Johnson. And there are a lot of amazing things happening there and the energy there is just electrifying. And so I just had a great opportunity to meet with the students. And I think along that lines, I just want to, after hearing what the comments been said today, I just want to say that, you know, as I'm walking through the buildings, I'm looking at myself and these students. And I'm wondering, when is the next time they're going to see a teacher who looks like me? And so it is, I just want people to know that it is equally important for me to ensure that we are trying to seek and retain highly qualified teachers of color. Because as I'm walking through the building, I do see an absence of people who look like me. And I do think that all children, whether you're white, blue, green, brown, or whatever color, you should have an opportunity to experience a Dr. Gurley, or when I was Mr. Gurley in the classroom, because there's a lot to learn from just the diversity of thought. And so we'll work through those things. And I know that there's some things happening already and the professional development pieces. And we're just going to get smarter together and people will, and people will see that. And we have the TAC meeting, which is the superintendent's advisory on Monday. And I'm really looking forward to that because what I heard tonight is people who, who don't typically feel like they have a voice and they're not heard. And I believe this will give them a space to be heard. And so what I hope they hear on Monday is that you can ask your questions without a fear of being retaliated against and that someone's always going to be in your corner to support you. And so I believe Monday will be the beginning. I want it to be the beginning of a new era, as they say, where people just, you know, you don't have to run. You don't have to run from, you can run to. And so we will be that place that you can run to. And the last thing I thought about is that I received a card prior to getting here. Ms. Dacre handed me a stack of cards and one was from a teacher in high school who sent me this really sweet card and it literally left me in tears all the way home. And so he asked me to give him a call and we had not spoken in over 30 years. And in about 20 years, I should say, I'm sorry, over 20 years, well over 20 years. And so what this moment and the things that I heard people say, teachers have a lot on their plate and we are all in it together. And the bottom line is the last thing that he told me on that call. He said, remember when you were running cross country? All I just, I wasn't good at it, I'm going to say. But he said, just remember to keep putting one foot in front of the other and we'll get to the finish line and I'll be waiting right there for you. And I do believe as long as we continue to move forward together, we're going to achieve our final goal, which is the success for our community and for the students. And so we're going to be better together and I'm looking forward to the work, the hard work, which is doors opening for children. So thank you.
You, Dr. Gurley. Thank you so much. Work session wrap up, Dr. Baptist.
Such as looking at the exit interviews, overall hiring process, internal candidates, services for mental health for our staff. So those are all things that I'll be working on. And then the report for the S E L positions.
Thank you. Okay, and upcoming meetings, our next meeting is November 4th. And that will be at 5 o'clock here at the Charlottesville City School Board Media Center. A reminder that two days prior to that is Election Day. So everybody go out and vote. There's early voting that's happening and the two Saturdays prior to that, there, the, that you can go and vote on those Saturdays. So that's an option for students, college students that might be able to make it back into town on those days to vote. And also just real quickly, I wanted to just bring to everybody's attention that the 18th is the council work session. Now, it was my understanding at this last meeting at city council, they actually did take action to move forward and support the plan for us to continue with reconfiguration as standard in our resolution that we unanimously approved. And at one point, it was thought that it was going to go back to them on the 18th. I don't believe it will, but I do want to draw attention that that is a council work session. So it's budget development. So it would still be important if you can to tune into that, please. And, you know, to sign up for public comment if needed. So just to continue to support moving forward with reconfiguration, I think it's important for us and the community if, and hopefully it is something that you support, that you will continue to be a voice for that. All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.